Good evening. I would like to call the, to order the regular city council meeting closed session. Time is now 5:33. City Clerk Duarte, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometa?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pemberton?
Present.
And Mayor Sosa.
Present. We have no one here for public comment. Do I still need to read all this? No? Okay. Thank you.
For the record, we have no one here for public comment.
Okay. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment regarding closed session items to be incorporated into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Well, is there a motion second to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Sorted by the mayor. The city council will now recess to closed session under the following authorities. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government codes. Government code sections 549, 56.9, D2, and E3. Claims pursuant to the Government Claims Act by Alberto Hurtado, Alexander Arenas, Linda Steele, Sonny Arenas, and Tommy Arenas. Available for public inspection at the city clerk's office at 11111 Brookshire Avenue during regular city business hours. Item number two, Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Jessica Rosas, Rosas versus City of Downey, et cetera, all. L.A. County Superior Court case number 22S's in Sam, T's in Tom, C's in Charlie, V's in Victor, 06985. Item number three, Government Code Section 54957B1. Public employee performance evaluation, title, city clerk. Item number four, Government Code Section 54957.6A. Conference with labor negotiator, agency-designated representative, James McQueen. Director of Human Resources, unrepresented employee, city clerk. We will now recess to closed session. The time is now 5:36.
Where's MP2?
Good evening. We'll now call the order, the meeting to order. It's now 6:34. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to call for the invocation Pastor Fish Figueroa from Real Life Calvary Church. Please, before we get to that, closed session item or items, do we have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. In tonight's closed session, the City Council addressed and considered items one and two on the closed session agenda with no reportable action on either one of those items. As for items three and four, those were continued to a later date. And that's the conclusion of my report.
Sorry, Pastor Fish, one second. We will now reconvene the regular City Council meeting. And the time is now 6:35. No, sorry. I was signaling to our city clerk. All right, guys. Before we begin the regular City Council meeting, this will all make sense later, trust me. Open session, I would like to remind members of the audience that anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number card from the city clerk. If you do not, if you did not obtain a number and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room, and city staff will issue a number card lining up during public comment. Will not be permitted, and each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. The time clock will begin when you begin your comments. Per the city's council meeting rules and for fire safety regulations, all persons shall remain seated unless addressing the council or entering or leaving the chambers. Standing in the aisles or along the walls is prohibited. Therefore, is overflow, there's overflow seating available in the lobby. And if there's no available seats in the chambers, please proceed to sit in the lobby. And again, I will call this to order. It's now 6:36. City Clerk Duarte, will you please call roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometa?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Proton Pemberton?
Present.
And Mayor Sosa?
Present. Okay, now, will you please join me and welcome me for the invocation Pastor Fish Figueroa from Real Life Calvary Chapel?
All right. Well, let's pray. Father, thank you so much, Lord, for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord, this opportunity to be with these leaders, Lord. And Father, I just pray right now. right now from wisdom, for wisdom from on high, from your throne, Lord God, to give them wisdom and direction, giving them my, your, give them your mind and your heart, Lord, regarding the issues of the city and governing, Lord, the people of the city. And Father, we ask that you would be praised and glorified, Lord. And we thank you, God, for the opportunity to serve you. And Father, we just pray, all of this, in the mighty name of Jesus, the only name by which a man can be saved, the only name by which you died on the cross for our sins, Lord. And so, Father, we thank you and we praise you and we give you glory in Jesus' name. Everybody said?
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Fish. Now for our flag salute, I'd like to welcome up the Royal Rangers Youth Group from Desert Rain Church, and also Girl Scout Troop Number 5605.
Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Please stand, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give these kids a round of applause. Now is the time for City Council member announcements, requests, future agenda items, and conference meeting reports. I will start to my right with Mayor Protem Dorothy Pemberton.
Thank you, Mayor Sosa. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our Downey City Council meeting. The devastation of neighborhoods with the recent wildfires are always first and foremost on not only my mind, but on the minds of all people. Everyone thanks the heroic efforts of our first responders, and that includes the first responders from our Downey Fire and Police Departments. We thank you for responding to our neighboring cities, and we're grateful for their safe return. And I'm, we're also thankful to the city staff that we're working some of the staging centers to help coordinate relief efforts. Greg Welsh, a community leader, I see Greg, Greg's here. Greg Welsh, a community leader and member of many Downey organizations, as well as our Downey chaplain, went out with a nonprofit group as a chaplain to Pacific Palisades Altadena to lend support and mental health counseling to victims of fire. So thank you, Greg, always in your service. Let's give a round of applause for our first responders. January Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day was January 20th commemorating the birthday of the civil rights leader. And in the spirit of giving, all 26 YMCA's held a day of giving with our first responders. Our Downey Board delivered lunch to four of our, all four of our fire stations. Our board member Liliana Sedana coordinated the donations while Joseph's Lounge donated hot lunches, and they very, were very well received at all the stations. I also want to call to your note that in January, January 1st Assembly Bill 413 is in effect, banning parking within 20 feet of marked or unmarked crosswalks. So namely, at the edge of a street, which blocks the view for motorists trying to turn left or right. So currently, the jurisdictions may only issue warnings, but on March 1st, violations can be issued. So when you're parking out, not even just in Downey and all over in our residential areas or cities, be cognizant of not parking right on the edge like they have been in the past. I attend SEAC, I am now the SEAC representative for Downey, along with the seven other member cities who comprise the board. And I look forward to learning of the operation and suggest with the other board members areas to enhance and improve, especially with adoption of animals. My colleague Horacio and I took a tour of one of our larger water wells and learned of the systems in place, along with how we can improve the current system should a power outage occur like it did on Christmas Eve. And especially with the recent fire disasters, our fire department is reviewing their systems in place to ensure that we have adequate sources for water if needed for a fire. So I want everyone to know, residents to know, our city staff is reviewing all of our emergency systems in place and will make suggestions to improving anything that we see that needs to be improved, such as purchasing more generators if funds can allow. I'd like to announce that there's also an oversight committee for Measure D, our recently approved QUADERSense Sales Tax Initiative, and the members will be those of the Measure S Oversight Committee, which recently met last week. We have a couple of save the dates. Again, I mentioned that the Downey to Police Department is hosting another youth academy, we have a lot of youth in here, for residents 14 to 18 years old. It's held for 10 weeks on Wednesday evenings from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., starting February 26th and running to April 30th. So contact our Neighborhood Watch Coordinator Stephanie Arroyo at 562-904-2374. It's such a great experience for our youth to see the workings, internal workings of our police department. I know a lot of us have taken the Citizens Academy already. So thank the police department, it takes a lot of time and effort. We appreciate that. On Thursday, January 20th at 3:30, doodalicious Myrtle, mural, is, was painted by Don Lamkin. It's right there on the Portos parking structure. It's the 10th anniversary. So the, huh? 30-year anniversary?
No, 10-year anniversary this?
Yes, this Thursday. Oh, the 30th. Yeah, I was just testing you. Thank you. So you're not late. And so that's going to be really nice. It'll be out there on the street. Thank you. On February 27th, 2/22, TLC, True Lasting Connections, is having their annual 5K at Apollo Park. And that's a great turnout with our community. And you don't have to run, you can be a walker like most of us are. I think you ran, right? Pass me up. City Manager, I'd like, one note for a follow-up. I'd like our staff to look into getting permanent speed detectors on Old River School Road between Firestone and Florence. We have them in different areas of our city with the, with the solar on top that will show and flash the light if you're over the speed limit. Many of our streets have issues, Old River School Speedway, as I call it, is one of them. And I think if we had two on each side going north and south, it'll help deter cars. I know when we had our, our mobile radar detectors, and I was behind a car doing 10 miles over, they immediately hit the brakes because they think they're getting sighted. So if we could look into that, if it's possible to put permanent lights and permanent detectors on Old River, I appreciate it.
I'll second that with Brookshire added to that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Pemberton. Councilmember Trujillo?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Public Works, our city manager, for the tour of the water wells. It was good to hear that we are hopefully going to invest in generators during our blackout on Christmas Eve. Residents who are asking, don't we have generators? We need generators to pump the water to keep the pressure up. So we are looking into that. And also, that's highly relevant in terms of how do we get water to our fire hydrants. I could assure you, at least we believe today that we have enough water for catastrophe such as multi-residential or commercial fires in the city. So we are looking into that. Thank you for working on that. Some future agenda items, well, I would like Code Enforcement to be proactive again about Christmas lights. It is almost February, so Christmas lights should be coming down. It's, maybe it's a personal peeve of mine, but I think the city looks better without Christmas lights all year long in some of these neighborhoods. City of Bill Gardens had passport services, making it easier for residents to get passports. Wanted to see if we can provide something like that similar. I see our Assistant City Manager getting ready to say something. Are we on it already?
Yes, we are. Our library is looking into those services right now, representing them back to council.
Excellent. So look out for that. We're trying to make it easier for you to get your passports. And more trash cans. A couple residents have said we need more trash cans, particularly along the main thoroughfares. I don't know if it's true, but if we could perhaps make an assessment and see if we can add some more trash cans where needed in the city. Can I get a second for that? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing further.
Thank you, Councilmember Trujillo. We'll move on to my far left, Councilmember Ortiz.
Good evening. There's so much bling going on right now, I'm a little blinded. Well, welcome. It's just started the new year, there's not much for me to report on, but I just wanted to say thank you to Public Works for the stop signs and the programs we're doing. I got a lot of feedback, so I'm gonna go through my messages and give a report back on some important places, but some residents are asking for stop signs. So I just want to say thank you so much to help us, you know, slow this speeding out. So, so thank you so much. And with that, that's all I have for today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz. Councilmember Frometta?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And ditto, Mayor Protem Pemberton said it all. I want to welcome everybody to your City Council meeting, those of you in person and those of you watching us via YouTube. I also want to welcome some special people in the house, Pastor Dan Dutch and his wife from Desert Rain Church. Thank you for joining us tonight. Also, I do want to, I know we have our, my favorite former mayor, Mr. Rick Rodriguez. Thank you for joining us tonight. Executive Director of our chamber, Michael Calvert. Thank you for joining us. Our Downey PD chaplain, who was just recognized a few minutes ago, Greg Welch. Thank you for joining us. Thank you. I know we will be recognizing the Downey Rose Flower Association, but I still want to give a special shout out and welcome to all of you. And I will be remiss if I did not also acknowledge we have commissioners in the house. If you're a commissioner, please stand. Jeannie Wood, my Commissioner John, Carrie Uva, and of course, last but certainly not least, my husband, Mr. Nulvers Frometta in the house. Thank you for joining us. And, and my daughter, who happens to be Miss Downey, Jessica Frometta. Thank you for joining us. Very quickly, I do want to echo Mayor Protem Pemberton's comments and, and her gratitude to our first responders. Thank you to our Downey Fire Department for sending the task force to help with the Eaton Fire. Thank you. And just last week, we did have a bit of a scare in my neck of the woods while I was on the other side of the country. There were some, a couple of fires reported, and one of, one of them was right, almost behind my house. And so I do want to thank very much the, the response of our great fire department. And I do want to thank my colleague, Mayor Protem Pemberton, for being also quick to check on my family. Thank you. I want to also let you know that the last council meeting, I asked RACD Cloak, I asked our city manager to have our emergency manager provide a report in the coming weeks to us as a council, but more for our community regarding the city's emergency response, our emergency management program. Downey is lucky to have an emergency manager. And again, in light of the, these last couple of weeks with the fires and other issues that we had on Christmas Eve, I think the community wants to know how prepared is Downey. And so in the next couple of weeks, please look forward to learning more about Downey's preparedness efforts. I do want to also encourage you, encourage our residents to invest in a small generator for your homes. That is always an important thing. And again, being in earthquake country, please, please make sure you always have enough water stored, as well as perishables, or excuse me, non-perishables. It is important to review your emergency preparedness plans with your family and with your children. Again, I don't have too much to report, being the, the beginning of the year. As you see the agenda, there will be some items that we will be discussing later tonight that will be good news and welcome news for our police department and our community in general. But I do want to also encourage our community members to reach out to Stephanie Arroyo. She is in charge of our Neighborhood Watch program. And if you are not part of a Neighborhood Watch program in your neighborhood, contact Stephanie at 562-904-2374, and inquire, where is the closest Neighborhood Watch program that, in your block that you can join? That continues to be an effective way to get to know your neighbors and to make sure that you are better prepared should an emergency arise. I don't have any requests at this time. Just continue to thank our police department for doing such a great job at keeping our community safe. And again, as the year begins, the community will also know, we will have a strategic workshop plan coming up in the next couple of weeks. And during this, every year, the council meets for several hours, and we talk about what our goals are for the year, for the city. And again, keeping in mind our overarching goals, we really focus, we realize there's so much that we want to do in a year. But it is important to keep, keep all of us, our requests focused. We only have a certain number of staff, and we cannot throw every request, as good as it may be, we cannot throw every request that our community member presents to us, to our staff. Otherwise, the big picture items and, and our strategic plan for the year would really go out the window. So I really ask for your grace and your patience as we get through this year and continue to have this dialogue as to how to make Downey a continuous great community and a great place to raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Frometta. Good evening, everyone. Good to see a full house here. I do want to acknowledge a few people that weren't named. Like to acknowledge Pastor Alex Fargus, formerly from New Seasons Church, back there. Also, Warren High Principal, Dr. Kerry White. Also, I see a few veterans in the crowd. If you're a veteran, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you for your service. And you're all important, really. I do have to acknowledge my lovely wife and my two sons sitting here as well. All right. I'll go ahead and share a couple of, also, I'm sorry, we have Ari Reese, Field Rep for Sunday Woman, Boca Pacheco here. I do want to share on a, on a couple of events that I attended. It was a pretty big homelessness outreach effort led by LA County and Supervisor Janice Hahn's office. It was pretty successful. Over 60 homeless persons were, were helped with not only being identified, but being pointed to resources, which is critical. And some of the, the organizations that took part in that, these are all LA County right here, the Encapment Resolution Team, Pathway Home, LASD, Homeless Outreach Services Team Host, Department of Public Works for LA County, Department of Mental Health, the Home Team, Department of Health Services, Multidisciplinary Team, and Metro Teams, also LASSA, and the City of Downey, and also CityNet and Sharps. So it was a collaborative effort, very successful effort. You're going to see a lot more of that. And, you know, this happens a few years ago, 10 years ago, what happens is, you know, they do the outreach and then there's no follow-up. So it's really critical that there's follow-up with respect to, respects to drug addiction, mental health issues, and providing shelter and just providing follow-up treatment. Because without that, then, then it's pointless to do these outreaches. So very, very happy and very happy to collaborate with the, the City of Downey and LA County on that. So stay tuned for more on that. Also, I did attend the US Conference of Mayors in Washington DC. It's a three-day conference just on the eve of the presidential inauguration. Some of the sessions that I attended, it was very informative, very insightful, and I got to connect with a lot of mayors across the country, especially here in Southern California. And some of the sessions I attended were housing, public safety, infrastructure, AI, building America's workforce, and uplifting our veteran workforce as well, homelessness, and also, this just to name a few, also, the, they had a session on FIFA World Cup, which is coming to the United States in 2026. And some of those games will be played in LA at SoFi Stadium. So I did speak with some directors, and we're going to connect with the local LA directors and trying to get some, some of that love over here in Downey. Stay tuned, stay tuned for that. So with that said, that concludes- So with that said, that concludes my comments. Again, thank you all for being here. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our city manager, Roger Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing from staff.
Thank you. So now I will go down to the podium and do some presentations. All right, first up is, this is my first, this is my initial Mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award. And you know what? I see a strong contingent of Warren Bears. Thank you all for being here. Go Bears! Thank you. We got love for you Downey Vikes, too. Jeremy started it. All right, there we go. So this one, this one's very special for me because it's, this individual has impacted my family and he's well-known. And, but I don't think any of my colleagues or the staff members know about this gentleman, but you're going to learn about him. David Chaw, social science, Avid 12 teacher at Warren High School. Mr. Chaw began his teaching career in 1999 and initiated the Avid program at Warren High School in 2001. Avid, which is advancement via individual determination, my sons have participated in this program, is a nonprofit college readiness program designed to equip students with the skills they need to succeed in college. Understanding that the success of the Avid program relied on having college tutors, Mr. Chaw faced the challenge of limited resources. To overcome this, he took it upon himself to raise the necessary funds, recognizing the financial challenges of the program. Mr. Chaw tirelessly proctored C-Best and RICA test preparations at Warren High School. Despite the physical demands of his work, he knew that each test day raised $3,000 for the Avid program. So he persevered alone for three years until other teachers joined to help. In a serendipitous meeting with an elite prep director who recalled Mr. Chaw's selfless act of paying for an SAT class for a student who couldn't afford it, moved by his generosity, Elite Prep agreed to provide SAT tutoring valued at millions of dollars to Warren High's Avid students. This partnership produced extraordinary results with students making significant improvements in the SAT scores, thereby enhancing their chances of gaining admission to top colleges. This success created a trickle-down effect benefiting students throughout Downey Unified School District. When the COVID-19 pandemic hit in 2020, Mr. Chaw recognized that underserved students would be disproportionately affected, excuse me, in their college application process. Drawing from his own experience growing up in a low-income household, he proposed the creation of Bear's University Seminar, BUS, an online college essay prep program. BUS, the only program of its kind in the country, was uniquely designed for Warren High School. This summer course offered students support on essay brainstorming, writing, and revising. The program quickly became a lifeline during a time of isolation, providing essential guidance through the college application process. And the BUS program flourished, growing to over 200 students, many of whom went on to attend Ivy League and other prestigious universities. Mr. Chaw's unwavering commitment to his students and his ability to create opportunities where none existed have had an extraordinary impact on countless lives. His legacy will continue to inspire and empower future generations of students. And I can tell you personally, I've had experience in dealing with Mr. Chaw. He has a heart of gold. He is a gem for this community. My wife and my sons are very thankful for him. A lot of the students, I know a lot of the students at Warren High, and I know a lot of the Avid students. This is a genuine man and I'm proud to call you a friend and I'm proud to have you be my first recipient of this award. So let's welcome David Chaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this great honor. And if I may just share a few words of thanks. When Mayor Sosa called me last week about this award, I told him straight on the phone call that I don't know if I deserve this award. And I do mean that from the bottom of my heart because I know so many colleagues of mine at Warren that deserve this, I feel like more than I do. But before I share any words, I just want to acknowledge some people that are here this evening, just to say thank you, because we are very strongly represented today. And so I wanted to start with our principal, Dr. White, Dr. Kerry White, our Assistant Principal, Russ Haiki, Coach Haiki, if you could stand up, okay? And our Athletic Director, Sam Miyahara, okay? And the one that's sitting right next to him is our sexiest security guard at Warren High School, Mr. Joseph Whitmer, our offensive lineman coach. And then our former football coach, Coach Pearson, if you could stand up, please. And then the crowd in the back is our Avid team. That's Dr. Charlotte Evansen. And then our Avid Coordinator, Andrea Harris. Guys, you guys got to stand up at least like quickly. Okay, Stephanie Fisher, can you stand up, please? Stephanie Fisher? Yes, thank you. And then Maria Franco teaches BUS program with me. And then Mr. Danny Mendez, he teaches everybody, kids for AP Econ, Ms. Jessie Holder. And then Mr. Jeff Arnold. And I think I got everybody from Warren, right? And then we got, oh, my next door. If you have to pinpoint one person at Warren right now who's making a direct, like, mark on kids' lives, it's this lady right here, Erin Hano Hano, right here. She runs our advisory period. And once we went block schedule and Dr. White completely utilized it to provide needed tutoring, she's the one that's making it all happen right now. So like, this was our first time last semester where we didn't have any kids that were ineligible because of her hard work with all the players and all the other student bodies as well. So she makes Warren happen. And so, okay, so, okay. And then I also want to mention a couple of friends that I asked to come tonight because I brought these guys like out of where they were. Because, and I'm going to share some stories too, but our former mayor, Rick Rodriguez, right here. Thank you, Mayor, for driving up from Long Beach and joining me tonight. Mr. Greg Welch, thank you for being here tonight. Pastor Alex Vargas, thank you for being here tonight. And the success that we enjoy at Warren High School is because of these people that are here tonight. Under Andrea Harris's leadership, we went, I mean, I might have started the program, but Ms. Harris is the one who took our program from eight sections to 19 sections of Avid. We really have an amazing program at Warren because she's been our coordinator for past 11 years. And so it's under her leadership that we are where we are. So yeah, I might have started, I might have dug, but she's the one who really built the program to what it is tonight. So I just want to say, you know, just acknowledge you and the success of Avid to your leadership. And Dr. Kerry White, because, I mean, we are all leaders in some capacity here, right? I mean, you follow the leader into the battles if you know your leader fights for you. And our principle is like that. Dr. White, when she says, when she says block schedule, we do block schedule. She says do enrollment, we do do enrollment. Because it's her that's leading us because we know she genuinely cares about every single one of us. Also, the BUS program that you mentioned, the college essay program. Maria Franco back there is one of my BUS teachers. Now, the BUS program is very intense. Imagine doing psychotherapy with your high school kid, 40 minutes, 40 minutes, 40 minutes, 40 minutes, 40 minutes, from 8:30 to 3:30 straight. And sometimes you're crying with them, sometimes you're encouraging them, sometimes you're listening to them, because brainstorming college ideas is hard work. And I need teachers who are hardcore, who's like in it to win it. She had to move a tumor a couple of years ago and she was UCLA Medical Center, but while she was on hospital bed, she was FaceTiming with her students so that they can get her college essays done. That's the kind of commitment and dedication that we have at Warren High School. And so I just want to make sure we highlight that. This award means so much to me. And I saved this person to last, but this is my mom. The saddest thing is she can't understand anything I'm saying right now. But she immigrated here, like many of our parents or some of us, and she started as a maid, working in the sewing factories on Broadway, working as a cook. She didn't, she never drove because she wanted to save that money so she can feed us. The sacrifice, and I still remember this one time, on a rainy day, she was walking up Sixth Street on, by Normandy, and she got hit by a Toyota Tundra in the rain. And my buddy who was nearby called me and I was in Brea for like a Christmas function and I drove straight to the USC County Hospital. And that was the first time I remember seeing her with a neck brace feeling, and I, first time I saw my mom fragile. And I remember the next day, she patched herself up and went back to work. And I, and I think about that grit of an immigrant that many of us might be familiar with. There's no going back. This is it. You're going to make life work. And I think if I learned anything from my mom, it's that grit from my, I didn't get it from anywhere else, it's her. And so I wanted to acknowledge my mom for her sacrifice and her work so that I can buy her nice things now. You know, like, that perm cost me $100 last Wednesday. You know? All the glasses she wears is Cartier, you know? Because I'm going to spoil my mom, you know what I'm saying? I'm going to take care of her. Bible says honor your parents. I'm going to honor my parents. I also want to thank those in the Downey community, and this is why I asked some of you guys to join me tonight. Mayor Rick, this guy and I hit it off like that when we first met. And I remember when we were raising money for the Warren Football Academy and we had no money. We were trying to have character camps for our football players in the summer, trying to, you know, work on character and trying to like build relationships, but we had no money. And so I talked to Mayor Rick, I said, Mayor Rick, I need money. So he brought me to the Kiwanis meeting and we were able to receive a generous check of $1,000. And then he said, oh, we're not done, we're not done. There's another group called Rotary. And so he brought me to Greg Welch and Greg Welch took me to Rotary. And then Rotary, it wasn't even better, they gave me $2,000. So when I told that to Mayor Rick, when I told that to Mayor Rick, Mayor Rick was not going to have it because I was unaware of this rivalry between these two amazing organizations. Mayor Rick says, you know what, I'll write you another check for $1,000 out of my foundation. So we were able to raise $4,000 to serve our kids. And that's representation, isn't it? Right? Rotary and Kiwanis being right next to each other, right? That's diversity right there in Downey, right? Those two guys standing next to each other. And then Greg Welch, I still remember one of our Avid kids, she, her mom passed away in her senior year, her father went through chemo, socioeconomically very challenged. And she basically had no money. And we did a fundraiser at our school, we were raised, we were able to raise about 10 grand, but she still needed support. And I remember Rosie Casillas, our secretary, called, I think Luz, Luz was sitting next to you at the meeting, Rotary meeting, I think. And then you and I talked and then you were able to provide the student and the family a beautiful funeral at your facility and also find them a beautiful place at Rhodes Hills so that this student, who didn't have the means, but had this community to support her, was able to celebrate her mom's life. And that's why I asked you to join with me because, I mean, you guys taught me how to serve community. You know, my idea of community is within my, within the walls, the Palmer, Gurley, you know? But you helped me to connect with those outside the city. And then Pastor Alex Vargas, you know, he's got the nice shiny forehead in the back right there. Like, when we were doing our character camp for our football players and we needed food, but like it's hard to, you know, like, feed 100 hungry football players after practice. He and his wife, Kristy, woke up at 5:30 and cooked till 4:30 for the entire week for years. And they served our kids Monday through Friday. He rallied a bunch of other churches in Downey and they all came and fed our kids. Didn't charge me anything. And I found out later it was out of their pockets that they served. And it's not like he's like, no offense, but it's not like he's like really, really rich. But he sacrificed everything he had in serving our players and that just showed the kind of hearts of people that we have in this community. Also, they're not here, but these are the women that also touched my life. Beth Gendro, who also served our community through the Downey Food Help. I mean, she might be tiny, but there's something about little women, I tell you, they're like very potent and, you know, just, they have a heart of gold. Martha Soretani, I also knew her as a board member, but I came to know her as a foster mom. And I've never seen a woman who cares so much about those who are, who needed a second chance in life. And she taught me the value of compassion. Nancy Swenson, our dedicated board member who's been with me from day one for Avid. She is inspiring and mentoring so many young girls that I sent her away. As a result, one of the girls that I kind of like sent to Nancy's direction is graduating with an aerospace engineering degree from Harvey Mudd this May. And then this one person I wanted to, Mayor Fromeda, I know we don't really know each other. I know that's your husband and I know that's your daughter over there, but that's all I know. 2020 was a hard year. And like many of you, I had to look at myself in the mirror and reflect and change the things that I needed to change. Because even if I felt like I lived somewhat of a good life serving others, there were internal maybe attitudes and prejudices that needed to shift and change. So I had to do a lot of self-reflection like many of you. And I, and I made my amends, I confessed my shortcomings to my good friend, Coach Treco, that I worked with for the past 10 years for FCA. And he was gracious enough to accept and receive and to forgive. At the same time, I saw my own city experience the kind of chaos that I haven't seen in all my years of living in LA since mid-'80s. I saw people just easily just breaking through all the cars in the streets, breaking through my apartment buildings, breaking through our cars, mailboxes being open all the time. It was a difficult time. The reason why I bring you up, because I remember watching the city council meeting online. And whereas I saw so many leaders kind of sidestep, hide into the shadows, you stood firm. And I can't imagine what those days must have been like. You know, I realize the older I get, I'm turning 50 this year, and I realize the older I get, true leadership is not about the titles before our name or the degrees after our name. It's really who we are when chaos hits. Then who you are really shows. And you know, whereas so many people were looking to save their names, I feel like for the sake of this community that you love more than yourself, you lay down your life to preserve this community. And I think by dying to yourself, Madam Mayor, I think you were the one who really lived. And so I wanted to genuinely thank you because, again, I've seen those meetings and I can't imagine the fortitude that you needed and the strength that you needed. And because you love this city so much, we are where we are. The fire hydrants in this city, the fire hydrants in this city does not run empty. And when our people need help, they are there. And so I wanted to say, I've said that to you for a long, when he told me I'm getting this award, this was the first thing I thought about, saying this to you. Because I'm very grateful to you. You kept the city together during that time. My story isn't about an educator who's done big things. I don't have that kind of wisdom or capacity in my brain. My coworkers know. But it's about a simple man with many inadequacies and shortcomings who got to experience God. And I know this sounds very cliché-ish, but let me tell you what I mean. I know Mayor Sosa briefly mentioned about this serendipitous meeting. In the, at the end of 2014, I had to reach out to a test prep company called Elite because our test prep was not satisfactory and our kids were hurting and our SAT scores were not going up. So I reached out to this company called Elite. They're like the Lexus of test prep companies. And I reached out and they invited me to a directors' meeting and there was one of me and four of them and we were just kind of conversing and I was telling them about the Avid program and what we needed. And they asked me, what do you know about our company? So I said, I know you guys to be the best test prep company there is. And a long time ago, 10 years ago, And long time ago, 10 years ago, there was a young man in my youth group, because I was a youth pastor at the time, whose father had a stroke, mom had a stage IV cancer, didn't have any money, but I remember taking that boy, his name was Joseph, I took Joseph to the LA branch of Elite, and I looked at the director and I said, this boy needs help, and I'll cover whatever I need to cover. That was 10 years before this meeting. I walked into this director's meeting in 2014, and I'm sitting there, and I'm telling this story. And then one of the directors pointed at the other lady and said, you mean her? I had no idea that the lady that I paid for this child's SAT education 10 years before was sitting directly across from me. So when I told that story, her eyes opened up, she looked at me, and she remembered what happened. I can't make this up, you know what I'm saying? I mean, who would think something I did 10 years ago would come back and help? I don't know about you, but that's God. We, I have a club that we, I sponsor on campus, it costs about $200 a week to feed these kids, look at the size of these kids, right? Coach Whitmer was our first president, you know? He plays offensive line. And we need 200 bucks a week, I'm not here to solicit money, just so you know, okay? We needed 200 bucks a week to feed these kids. And I remember asking for donations and help. I gotta tell you, for 10 years, we've been having this club meeting, there are 20 boxes of pizza every single meeting, off of pure donations for the past 10 years feeding these kids. If that's not God, then I don't know what is. And then lastly, um, when I was doing the test prep, raising that money every month, and it was tiring, uh, around, between, between '02 and '04, '05 was also when my brother was serving time. So on Saturdays, I would proctor tests from 4:50 in the morning till 7:30, 8 o'clock at night. I would go home Saturday night, after vacuuming, cleaning, and rearranging all these classrooms. The very next morning, I had to wake up at 5:00 in the morning to go see my brother who was locked up. And, you know, if you know anything about prison visits, they're about four-hour round trip or six-hour round trip, processing takes like two to three hours, you get to see the guy for only two to three hours. And those were the most difficult years physically. But I remember seeing my mom sleep right next to me, because now she can rest, because I'm the one who's driving, otherwise she had to take this charter service called Touch a Class and go to Union Station by 2:00 AM to catch that bus to the prison. I remember experiencing that time as difficult it was, and I remember thinking, I can't do this alone. But as Matthew 19:26 says, "With man this is impossible, but with God all things are possible." So if I can just, and I know I talk so much, and I apologize, but, but, but if I can just leave you with just one word from my heart, is that if someone as inadequate and short like me can do these things, anyone can do these things. And my hope and desire for every one of us here, well, actually, it's not a hope, I just wanna say thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rick, for just serving this community year after year, even between heart surgeries and what you had to go through during that time with people blowing horns at your house, when you're at the hospital and your wife is home alone, all those attacks that you got. But thank you for showing us compassion and love and mercy, and it's so good to see you. And thank you, Greg, for just years of sacrifice. Your life is that of service, you know, Mahatma Gandhi said, my life is my message, and I feel like that's you. Your life is that of service, and that's who you are. And Pastor Alex, you and I, we still got many years left. You know, we gotta step up after these guys and follow their examples, you know? I don't know if I could build a house like this guy in Long Beach, but you know, we're gonna... But I am truly honored by this award, and again, I apologize for taking so much time, but I did wanna say thanks to everyone that's here, and I did wanna say thank you for your leadership, because I, you inspire so many young women and men in this city. There are, there are stripes on awards that you can't, you can't buy, you know? And, and, well done, well done. And Mayor, thank you so much for the time.
We do have a couple of acknowledgements here, and I, I'm not sure it wasn't why, it wasn't in the bio, but the, uh, thank you for your leadership in the FCA, which is Fellowship of the Christian Athletes, and my sons have participated in that, and they really appreciate your service there. So we do have, um, the certificate from the, uh, Assembly, our Assemblywoman, Blanca Pacheco's office, okay? And then we also have, um, a plaque, um, from our city, and it's got a few words in there, I'll let you read that right now. Now, we're the City Pins. City Pins, okay? So, uh, let's go ahead and take a picture, you wanna take a picture, do you wanna have your mother come up? All right, so as many of you know, um, I'm kinda switching things up with the Mayor's Outstanding Citizen Award. So, um, we put it out there, you're gonna see some advertisement on social media from the City of Downey. Um, I wanna be able to bring people up here that I've never even heard of, so we're taking input. If you have any recommendations, nominations, I wanna hear from you. So my challenge to any of the bikes in the crowd, please nominate someone as passionate as this Warren Bear right here, please. Thank you. Thank you, Warren staff, appreciate you, Dr. White, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, we're gonna go ahead and recognize the Downey Rose Float Association for winning the Founder's Award at the 136 Tournament of Roses Parade. At this time, I'd like to call up President of the Rose Float Association to accept the certificate on behalf of the association, that's Andrew Malarki. Yeah, good luck with that, Andrew. All right, so we have a couple of certificates here, um, just wanna say congratulations to Andrew, Jeremy, the outgoing president, Kelly Roberts, Jennifer Decay, where's Kelly?
Kelly's over here, right?
Oh, there he is, yeah. So, uh, and the, and the rest of the crew, and I'll let you give kudos to them, but outstanding, uh, I see a lot of people in here who worked on the float, uh, including, uh, you know, me and my family, and what a joy, right? It was beautiful to see that on the, uh, on the TV, we were getting a lot of calls. People are calling, I had relatives calling me and asking me, Hector, I don't see you on the float. I'm like, well, but I'm not supposed to be on there, so thank you, though. But, so we have a couple of certificates, uh, one of them says Andrew Malarki, we are gonna get one that says the Downey Rose Float Association. We also have one from our Assemblywoman, Blanca Pacheco, and, uh, let's give it up to Andrew Malarki. And we're gonna have him say a few words, right?
I guess so. You know, I'm not the best at public speaking, this is Jeremy's float technically, that won the award, not mine, but I'd like to thank everybody, Kelly, Jason Yost, John Browning, Danielle Aaron, Jennifer, all the court girls and everybody in this city. So I appreciate if you guys all wanna come up here for this picture, it's a group effort, I'm gonna make it short and sweet.
Yeah, so if the Rose Float Association members wanna come up, we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and take a photo. You're getting in trouble with all the bikes in the crowd. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and, um, have a presentation of City Pins to the, uh, 2025 Miss and Mr. Downey Court. And if I can have Reggie Donahue come join me and help hand out some pins, as well as Kathy Ledesma. Okay, we'll start with, uh, Ms. Downey, Jessica Frometta. Ms. Downey Princess, Ally Hanks. Ms. Downey Princess, Tiffany Aguilar. Ms. Downey Princess, Maya Munoz. Ms. Downey Princess, Jasmine Smith. Ms. Teen Downey, Alexis Givens. Ms. Teen Downey Princess, Leila Simonian. Ms. Teen Downey Princess, Sofia Morales. Ms. Teen Downey Princess, Isabel Munoz. Junior Ms. Downey, Leah Kaitpool. Junior Ms. Downey Princess, Erica Estrada. Junior Ms. Downey Princess, Gianna Otto. Junior Ms. Downey Princess, Jackie Urellas. Little Ms. Downey, Leanna Alvarez. Little Ms. Downey Princess, Valerie Estrada. Little Ms. Downey Princess, Sofia Viata. Mr. Downey, Remy Castillo. Mr. Teen Downey, Aiden Silva. Junior Mr. Downey, Gabriel Salamanca. Little Mr. Downey, Kurt Araho. And our chaperones, Reggie Donahue, Carrie Redfox, and Kathy Ledesma. Yeah, so... And let's give it up to our Teen Ms. Downey Court guys. All right here in front of the podium?
Mayor, Mayor? I'm gonna pull this back so you guys see it.
Okay, that concludes our presentations, thank you. Okay, now is the time for public hearings, uh, there's one public hearing, uh, this evening. Public hearing number two. Public hearing number two to consider and discuss the transition to either a five district election system or a four district election system with an at-large elected mayor. That the city council conduct the second public hearing to consider and discuss the transition to an election system consisting of either five individual districts, four districts plus an at-large mayoral office, including any public input, and to affirm the prior decision to implement a five district system or provide alternative direction to city staff. The hour hasn't arrived. The public hearing is now open. The time is now 7:37. City Clerk Duarte, do we have proof of publication?
Yes, mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to receive and file the publication?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
City Manager Bradley, is there a staff report?
Yes, mayor. Mr. Funk, our city attorney, will provide the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council, members of the public. As you know, we are in the middle of a series of public hearings to consider a potential transition in our election system. And I thought I would just, if the outset... Oh, let's give the presentation. I thought it might be helpful to recap our public hearing. The first, the introductory public hearing that we had on January 14th on this subject. The council did indeed discuss the transition in the election system. Our current system is what I'll call a mixed system that features four districts plus one at-large district. The transition would be to either one of these options. An all-five district system that would change District Five from its current at-large geography into a discrete portion of the city, like Districts One through Four. Or what I'll call a four-plus-one system that would retain Districts One through Four in their current form and convert District Five to an at-large mayoral seat. At the hearing on January 14th, the city council voted unanimously to implement a five district system. And you'll of course recall that this action is being taken in response to a challenge to our election system under the California Voting Rights Act. For tonight's public hearing, the city council will continue to discuss the transition to either a five district system or a four-plus-one system, consider any public input, and decide which system to implement. Meaning that the council tonight may either affirm its prior decision or make a different one. Two hearings are required by law for this decision. So even if it is the case that the council affirms its prior decision, tonight's hearing is required to essentially bring that discussion to a close on this one point. The considerations for discussion at the last meeting for either one of these options appear on this slide. I'll just summarize real briefly. The five district system, as noted up there, is procedurally a little more complex because a new district is being created by taking space from the existing four districts. With the four-plus-one system, it's a bit less procedurally complex. No new district is being created, but rather District Five would be converted to a mayoral seat. The other advantages, or I should say considerations for the discussion appear on this, on the chart as well. I believe we went over these last time. And so for, in the interest of time, I'll proceed. The neighboring cities, again, we reviewed some of their practices last time. There's about 14 jurisdictions nearby whereby the mayor is selected by and among the city council. A few cities elect their mayor directly. Those are El Monte, Long Beach, South El Monte, and the city of Whittier. For the final two public hearings, I'll remind the council that at least four public hearings are required to complete this transition process. More can be had if necessary, but at least four are required. For the final two, if the council affirms its prior decision to implement a five district system, the city will retain a demographer to assist in the preparation of new electoral maps. Those maps will be published before the third public hearing for consideration by the public. The input will be made electronically. We'll have a tool for that. If the four-plus-one system is selected, there'll be no maps to review, but the meeting will still be had for public input. If the fourth public hearing, again, the maps will be considered, public input will be taken, and the council will, at that point in time, actually select an adopted ordinance depending on whether its decision was to implement a five district system or a four-plus-one system. In terms of the timing of this transition, by agreement with Council for a prospective plaintiff who brought the challenge, the ordinance implementing any transition has to be adopted by May 12, 2025. The change to a five district system would take place in November 2026 ordinarily because the prospective plaintiff can demand the change as soon as possible. That could be later by agreement with Council for the plaintiff, but likely not beyond November 2028. No decision on that point is necessary tonight, however. With a four-plus-one system, the new mayoral office would take effect in 2028 at the conclusion of the current District Five term. Finally, I'll just point out that under state law, it's very clear on this point, no term of any current council member will be abbreviated by any change in the city's election system. All incumbents will serve the full duration of the current term. Public engagement is a key component of this process. In addition to these public hearings, the public is encouraged to provide input electronically or through the clerk's office. Information about the system is on our website, is live. If a five district system is implemented, there'll be an online mapping tool for the public to use. And finally, for any further questions about the proposed changes, the public is always welcome to contact the city clerk's office at the phone number there or her email address. And her office, with the assistance of mine, will be happy to respond to any inquiries. And that's the conclusion. I'll certainly take any questions if there are any. Otherwise, I'll open up a public comment.
Thank you, City Attorney Funk. Do any of the members of the council have any questions or comments?
I have one question. Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If, when we have the maps redrawn, do you think there will be an option whether to have a certain direction that the new district might be carved out? Or will that, it's not the cartographer, it's the...
Demographer.
Demographer. That the demographer will just say, it will be absolutely this way for this new district, that we will not have an option or a decision?
So the council will have options. There'll be several versions of the maps prepared. The maps have to be prepared under certain guidelines, however, in accordance with state law. The primary factors taken into consideration by the demographer when preparing the maps are things like equality of populations. The districts have to be contiguous. And there is something called communities of interest that the demographers need to retain and keep together when drawing the new districts. So to answer your questions, there will be options, but the maps are prepared under the criteria through state law.
John, I do have a question. And again, this is along the lines of what MPT Pemberton just mentioned. Do we have the ability to also guide the demographer? In other words, when we're looking at the creation of this fifth district equal to the rest of them, could we look at, looking at Downey as a whole and looking at reducing each of the districts by 5% and creating District Five kind of in the center of the city? So that, you know, the other districts don't seem to be... So that it's more practical, in other words. Do we have that ability to have more input into what we would prefer?
Yes, you will, council member. In fact, the demographer will be here for the presentation of those maps. I've had some preliminary discussions with him pending the council's final decision. He's not available on February 11th. And in any case, it will take a little more time to prepare those maps. So I anticipate that the third public hearing will be held on February 25th. But to answer your question, yes, you will have input. Again, the maps are drawn according to the criteria that I described earlier. But you will have the chance to provide input to the demographer, each one of you, and to express certain preferences that you may have.
Yeah. Again, from a practical standpoint, it would seem that, you know, shaving 5% from each district to create that center district would be most appropriate, or that the middle of the city, right? By taking from each one of the surrounding districts.
Understood. And I think that idea has even arisen, you know, on a preliminary basis. But yes, you will have the opportunity to provide your input.
Now, one of the, in your previous slide, we did look at, and we discussed at our prior meeting, that, again, based on what what the plaintiff brought forth, the changes must be made by 2026. However, with us, you know, going through this process and in good faith, moving in the five district direction potentially, could we have an agreement that this will not take place until the conclusion of '28? So that, again, going back to your point of no district and no council member will be shortened of their term, again, council member, the council seat for, seat five is, comes to an end in '28?
Correct. So no term would be impacted regardless of when we ushered in the change, whether it's November 2026 or 2028. All current incumbents would serve the full duration of the term. However, if the five district system were implemented in November of 2026, the composition of Districts Two and Four, for example, would change at that election. And it would be those districts as defined then that would be elected. To your point about whether we could delay that change up to 2028, yes, in theory, provided that the council for the, or the prospective plaintiff would be agreeable to that. And I say that only because a plaintiff is entitled under the law to insist that the change made, could the change be made at the earliest possible date? And for us, that earliest possible date is October, I'm sorry, November 2026. But if we're the direction of the council, certainly I would engage opposing council and do our best to seek an agreement that any change we make or the district system would be implemented in November of 2028. With respect to the four-plus-one system that would convert District Five, if you will, into an at-large mayor, that would go into effect in 2028 irrespectively, if that system, if that were chosen.
Thank you, John.
Any other comments?
John, I do have one question. Has there been any written, public comments submitted in regards to this discussion between us? Because it's a pretty big topic to discuss. It will change how the city is run or how we elect our council members and, you know, districting and everything. I tried to go on the scan, this scan, but I don't see, it wasn't working for me. But has anybody submitted any comments?
Certainly, council member orities, I'm aware of one comment that was forwarded to me today, a written comment that was quite detailed, expressing a preference for the five district system. I'm not aware of any other written comments pertaining to tonight's public hearing, unless Alicia knows otherwise.
No, only the one that was submitted today that I will announce shortly when the mayor opens for public comment.
But certainly, I would share your view that this is a significant change to be discussed and considered by the council with input by members of the public. And so to that end, as I said in the last slide, and I'll put it back up, we are engaging in a campaign of public engagement. It is on our website. We will have an online mapping tool so that members of the public can experiment with their own maps because it is the case that members of the public can submit maps for the council's consideration as well.
Thank you. I was going to ask that question.
And so we'll continue to engage in that, you know, public awareness campaign. And for example, I know just recently we moved it to the top of the website or in the homepage on the website.
Thank you.
So folks are aware of an upcoming change in the election system. It even says something like, note, see here for upcoming changes in Downey's election system.
Thank you. And that was going to be my follow-up question. If we're beholden by any announcements that we have to announce to our city residents of these changes. But now I see it's on the website, and we're not announcing on Instagram or any type of social media platforms?
Not until...
We do intend to use social media as a platform as well.
I think, John, you had highlighted some of the outreach you planned to do as part of this presentation.
But for tonight's public hearing, Alicia will confirm that. But I do know there was a single public comment received. Typically with the maps, council member orities, I'll say that, that discussion can, it could potentially grow a bit more lively, if you will, only because that's really where the rubber's meeting the road in terms of the change. You know, to date, the council has discussed, you know, what direction it might wish to take, that it's either the four-plus-one or that the five district system. The council last time voted unanimously for the latter. It may affirm that decision tonight. Once that decision is made, you know, the blueprint will be laid, if you will. And, you know, that might stimulate further public comment.
Thank you, John. No further questions, mayor. Yeah, thank you, City Attorney Funk. My sentiment on this is the same, on this item. But I will emphasize in assistance on having this take effect at the earliest of 2028. Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues?
No other comments, except I also remain unchanged from the last vote we had a couple of weeks ago. And that is moving to a five district equally, divided five districts.
And so just in conclusion, then, the task for the council tonight, if you will, will either be to affirm that decision or to make a different one. So then the staff has clear direction as to the next steps. And with a five district system, that will be the engagement of the demographer to prepare the maps. We'll return to you with those maps likely on February 25th, which will be the date of the third public hearing.
So I move to affirm, mayor.
Well, we have to open this up to public comment.
Yes.
Are we good, colleagues? Okay. I will now open this item up for public comment. Thank you, City Attorney Funk. City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written correspondence to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, mayor, we did. We received one written public comment from Faras Akil in support of a five district system. And he also added that he is in favor of the current one-year rotation of council member to mayor. He believes that eight years' term limit is a great balance and keeps the Downey system of government healthy. He agrees that if there is a mayor, the role of the city manager would be diminished. And that is all, mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk Duarte. In-person public comment, members of the audience wishing to address the city council regarding the public hearing item may come up when your numbers call. I will be calling yellow-numbered cards. For this item, I remind speakers that you have three minutes to address the council, and your comments must be regarding this public hearing item only. City Clerk Duarte, how many speakers have taken a number?
We have six, mayor.
Thank you. Speaker number one, please come forward.
Lee Squire, Vietnam-era veteran, son-nephew, World War II. Downey High School graduate, 1967. City government, 37 years, six with Southgate, 31 with Brea. This issue about being served notice, this happened a lot in LA County, and I'm sure that your city attorney knows this. You've represented that we had five districts. I say you need to be held accountable to that. I'm for five equal council districts with a rotating mayor annually and the mayor pro town. Also, if we become disenfranchised with any of these five districts, to recall that individual would be more sustainable with five equal districts rather than an at-large, which would require the entire city to do that. I don't see any justification to have an at-large mayor. I don't care whether they serve two or four years. Also, if it says, okay, it may cost 50 grand, I think it's prophetic. We just voted in a sales tax, so that $50,000 is a drop in the bucket. So as far as I am concerned, I am absolutely supportive of five-member council. And I look forward to, we, the people, with our own reiterations of how we would like to see those five boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number two, please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Horn.
I'm going to outline what I'm going to do here. I'm going to first address a misconception at our January 14th meeting by City Attorney John Funk. Yes, analysis. But first, I want to go through and set three parameters. A term in Downey is four years. We all understand that. Your term starts the moment you take off the office. And I'm going to present four cases, two federal and two at the city of California level. And I'm going to present four cases, two federal and two at the city of California level. Now, looking at the analysis, the analysis according to California voter law, and I will go a little on probate here. In the last January 14th meeting, the city attorney said that your term would not be effective if you were an elected mayor. Because your term, and get this right, your term starts when you get office. So anyone from the council that comes on is still in their term. You cannot add one or two years to that term. Your term starts, we have a maximum of eight years or two terms of four years in Downey. Now, the state law says that you may not shorten or affect the current term. That's correct. So if someone in their third year of completion on the council decides to run for a two-year term of mayor under the system programmed, you are vacating your office for your final year, which will be included in the mayor of one of the two years. And then the second year, you're having to abandon your district when you do this. Because an election for the one year that you're giving up will have to be there or leave it vacated. Your two years, making a total of five years, now puts you, when you have a four-year term, now you only have three years left to run for office. An office term is three years. Unless you run for mayor again for two years, that would give you seven years total. So in that regard, the Downey thing I want to talk about, we lost the president in '63, the vice president took over. We just voted for a senator that passed away. The short unexpired term was filled, in short-term, long-term. In Downey, we had the problem two years ago where vacated seats were taken and we had to go through a period of election. So thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number three, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilwomen and councilmen. I have found Downey to be a great city for another number of reasons. And one is we have this Downey patriot for information. Another is the library is an invaluable source, because this article I clipped is from The Wave. So there are two things that are available in Downey. And The Wave has one part, a second public hearing is set for January 28th, followed by a hearing February 11th and 25th, as City Council Funk mentioned. There's another one. Funk said that council plans to hold the first two public hearings before having new district maps drawn. I thought, well, that's rushing it, isn't it? That we need some more time until, and then I saw this other article. Final changes also could be subject to a public vote. Very informative, but I started thinking more about what the dynamics of this council are. And since I save a lot of the papers, I'll refer to the dynamics of this council and how it could be changed if there was a mayor that was elected and find a separation between the council and the mayors. And that is when Mayor Sosa, December 12th, reveals 2025 goals. Because I love these mayor corners and the visions for each year. And I've been impressed with the mayors. I see three mayors up here, current. I see then Mayor Trujillo and Mayor Trujillo, two terms. And so I'm impressed with the quality of people we've had, each with a new vision that in four years, if somebody's elected, there may be entirely different vision than this. And so I have changed my mind from thinking of rushing to see, I think, the real efficacy of the five districts, even with this cost. They're saying of $36,000 in attorney fees and $50,000, because I see what Lee is saying and what Tim is saying. And the way the council works is our city council meetings, let's see, we come from different political ideologies, backgrounds, but I can honestly say that my experience with this council is we're getting things done. He says that the current council works well together. I think that is telling of the approach that you could use of each rotating, each vision, their own vision. And to have that, the four plus one system may sound good economically, but I've come to the fact that the dynamics of this council and previous councils that I've seen... Good.
Thank you, sir. Speaker number four, please come forward.
Batting cleanup, number four. I don't know how you're going to draw five equal districts, to be honest with you. That's going to look pretty odd. And everybody knows all the voters are up in districts three and four. And that's where most of your voter turnout is. It's not in one and two. Your percentage of turnout is in three and four. That would look pretty odd on a map. I'd like to see how they did that. What would the prospects be if you just holding your ground and not caving to this lawsuit? What would be the problem? Are we on solid ground or not? I think you are. But if you were going to change anything, I'd like to see five equal districts, but I just don't know how you're going to draw that out. Actually, I'd propose only three districts. Eliminate two council districts. I'm for less government, for sure. That would be more accountability to the resident voters. We can keep a better track of what's going on in this city. Something to think about. Nobody trusts government now as it is till we get some reformations going on. And we don't believe that the elections in LA County are legitimate anyway. We need voter ID requirements. We need to have that first in Downey before we can have any legitimate elections to be considered. Voter ID. Now, that would take some backbone and it takes some guts, because LA County cannot be trusted. We cannot trust it. They just keep counting and counting and counting. We know how it works. So I would like, I don't know what the proposal is from this attorney. Seems to have some personal issues with some other people here on the council. Working for the old law firm together, the guy views, I guess, our people as bowling pins to be knocked over. Maybe it's legitimate, I don't know. But if you're going to do anything, we don't need an elected mayor. We have nobody capable of holding up the liability of an elected mayor and whatever that mayor's duties are. It's a whole different ballgame. And we're not capable of dealing with it. So I will stick with the three, which there will be some things to have to change at the state level. But you can start that process and start advocating for only three council districts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Bradley and staff. Just two brief comments, what's happening. Mr. Funk has mentioned many times the plaintiff. I would like to know the name of the plaintiff or the organization the plaintiff works for. And secondly, I'd like to find out what part of the California Voters Act triggered the fact that we have this discussion here tonight? Why did all this happen? What was the emphasis on part of this organization to create this? Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number six, please come forward.
Okay, I haven't been up to date. I've been watching the playoffs, to be honest. Five sounds good to me, with no elected mayor, just floated around. That way, if we get stuck with a lemon one year, it's easier to toss them out. Well, just keep it simple. I've always lived by that. It's just, just keep it so simple. I couldn't imagine what we'd have to do if the other city person that got voted out, if she was the whole citywide had to vote. I just couldn't imagine that. I don't care about the money, because we're going to spend it anyway. We might as well enjoy it. At least we know what it's going for. But I think you guys all work together and you all have your own independent ideas, which I think from, I always get your name wrong, Mayor Mario, I'm sorry. But you guys all work good together. And again, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So we got to make a few adjustments, tighten the wheels up or whatever. I don't care. But just leave it with a floating mayor and if you want five districts, good luck on doing that. I don't, I don't think you're going to make everybody happy, no matter what. I've sat in these meetings now and you can't make people happy. I mean, I just, you can't do it. I was, I'm dealing a lot with the fires, because I work for Edison. And we're doing 24-hour shifts with 16 hours, eight on, or 16 on, eight off. And you can't make people happy. And we're having to make hard decisions out there of who's going to get the power and who's not. But it's the same situation here. Just vote your conscience. I know you all have a conscience. You have to, because I haven't seen any lemons in this selection of people. And I'm glad you got to be mayor, Mayor Sosa, and then Pemberton? I think I got it right. You'll be next. So it's nice to have a taste of different people's ideas. And that's what makes a good government, is different ideas. We don't always have to agree, but we do have to come together at one point or some point and say, okay, just do it. I mean, but like I said, I've got a whole 50 seconds left and I plan on taking every second, because I've earned it. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. You guys are doing a great job. And I'm for the five with the rotating mayor. I think it works. Thanks.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion in a second to close public hearing. Time is now 8:10.
Second.
Sorted by the mayor. Unless there are any comments from the council, I will entertain a motion in a second to affirm the decision from the last council meeting, which is to go with the five district system.
I'd make a motion to affirm our past decision and adding to, if we can get that correspondence with the plaintiff to delay its effect until 2028.
A second.
Now is the time for public, no, no. Now is the time for agenda, consent calendar. This is off right here. Public comment on agenda, consent calendar, non-agenda items. Now is the time for public comment on agenda, consent calendar, and non-agenda items. The city clerk will play the pre-recorded narrative of the council meeting rules.
The city council will now take public comment on agenda, consent calendar, and non-agenda items. If you did not receive a number card and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room to be issued a number card by city staff. We will be calling blue number cards for the public comment period. Before we begin the public comment period, we would like to remind members of the audience that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Members of the audience and speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive one warning and then may be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the Municipal Code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. The city council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction and invites the public to do so during the city council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the city council to conduct the public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. We expect that everyone who participates in today's meeting, from the members of the council here on the dais, to staff, to the members of the public in attendance, do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity, name-calling, or behaving in a way that disrupts this meeting. This includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupts or disturbs the meeting. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the city council. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking. Any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. And attacks of a person. Total nature on city staff or city council members that have no connection to agenda items or non-agenda items. We remind speakers that your comments must be addressed to the mayor and not to any other council member, city staff, or the audience.
City Clerk Duarte, did we receive any written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
We did not, Mayor.
Is there a motion in a second to receive and file written public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Mayor, we don't need to vote here. We don't have any written public comment. We can move on to in-person public comment.
Thank you. City Clerk Duarte, how many speakers have taken a number?
We have six. We have six, Mayor.
Okay. Based on the number of speakers, each speaker will have three minutes to address the city council. I remind all speakers that you must remain seated until your number is called.
Former President Jimmy Carter died recently and was laid to rest with great ceremony. Jimmy Carter claimed to be a Christian. He was a lifelong Baptist. However, he approved of abortion. Jimmy Carter and others who claim Christianity and yet approve of abortion are forgetting these words of sacred scripture, which were written down for us about 2,700 years ago by the ancient prophet Isaiah. Shall I bring to the time of birth and not cause delivery, says the Lord. Shall I, who caused delivery, shut up the womb, says your God? Isaiah, Chapter 66, Verse 9. Visit this website, choicebeginshere.org.
Thank you. Speaker number two, please come forward.
Lee Squire, Vietnam-era veteran, son and nephew of World War II, civil rights advocate, American legion for God and country. I hereby assert my First Amendment rights under the First Amendment to the United States Constitution and my federal civil rights for the Civil Rights Restoration Act of 1987. Mayor and city council, first, I recognize the word woman and mother. I recognize councilwoman and mother Pemberton and Formeda. Holocaust Remembrance Day is January 27th of each year. Six million Jews were exterminated via Nazi Germany and these concentration camps. The worst one was Auschwitz. Over 1 million Jewish children were murdered because they were nothing more than a Jew. 2024 also was attacks against the Jews and... 2024 also was attacks against the Jews in America, including our colleges and our synagogues. The presidents of three universities resigned among congressional hearings because they couldn't even answer the simple question is, does river to the sea constitute discrimination against the Jews? Also, the Jews were subject to verbally b-rating at our universities and other events in colleges in this country. I was saddened that tonight, that we did not have a Jewish leader from the Downey Jewish Temple in honor of Auschwitz Day. Mayor, did you send any communications to the Downey Jewish Temple as to Holocaust Remembrance Day, either inviting them here tonight, or you actually sending them a letter, acknowledge them, not only them, but the World War II veterans who liberated them from these concentration camps? Thank you, Councilwoman Pemberton, for recognizing the Holocaust Remembrance Day on behalf of my Jewish community and Martin Luther King Day on behalf of the Black slash African-American community. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number three, please.
I just wanted to let everybody know that the 1962 Taco Bell building is sitting on the side of a road. It's offered to Downey before demolition, so if you're interested, please contact Roger Miller at the Downey Historical Society and he will give you the terms for bringing it back to Downey if you wish to do. It's a 1962 Taco Bell that originated in Downey. So if you wish to obtain it for the city of Downey, please contact Roger Miller at the Downey Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number four, please come forward.
Clean up again. Well, here we are. We have a lot of talk about a lot of things people want to do. I hear online, one of the podcasting chuckleheads that we hear all the time in Downey, that they want to do murals. Murals in Downey, that's a great idea. We want murals everywhere. One thing that's never mentioned is obviously Donald Trump won 41% of the vote here in Downey. I think it's a good opportunity to have 40% of the murals in Downey, in downtown Downey, dedicated to President Trump and the MAGA Republicans. Wouldn't that only be fair? 40% of all murals in Downey? He won 41%. Let's have some representation. We love diversity. I'm, I'm more than willing to bring diversity to the conversation every night when I come here. And I'm sure I'm accepted with open arms. So I think that would be a good idea. I, I think, I'm back to this voting thing. I don't know why, why don't you just hold your ground? Why are you cowering to this plaintiff? But maybe extending it and contacting them is a good idea. Maybe you can discuss it. I'd like to thank the Downey Rose Float. That is an organization, the only organization that I think the city council should ever support financially from, from the council authority. They represent Downey. They have busted their rear ends for years. They have fundraised. They try to get volunteers. They try to get donations and it's running a little thin out there. People don't want to donate, but they do a good job. I mean, they've done it for years and I just want to tip my, my hand to them and just give them, give them a real good shout out, you know? I think we should support them. I still think we should be cutting off all funding to all nonprofits other than that one in the city of Downey. Donald Trump has cut off $3.3 trillion to foundations and NGOs and nonprofits, especially the money that goes to these left-wing, big government tax and spend liberal organizations. They are being cut off right now and they're whining and crying like crazy about it because they need money from you, just like you give our money to nonprofits in this town, which creates nothing but money laundering for the Democratic Party and it needs to stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker number, is it number five? Speaker number five.
Mr. Mayor, good evening again. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge our new fire chief, Hilda Brand. Wish him well on his new journey as he goes along. And I want to thank the fire department, the Downey Fire Department, very much for their using of their personnel and equipment in helping to fight the fires that we had in LA. And as a suggestion for all of us, we need to do more, either from volunteering or possibly providing some funds, or at least we can pray for those that have been affected by the fire. Secondly, I want to compliment the council, Mr. Funk, Mr. Bradley, for the fact that in the last five to six months or so, the composure in this room has been great. The speakers that we had at one time created some problems with regards to the orderly advancement of the council meetings, but because of the implementation of the new regulations and with regards to that, it seems like the council meetings have gone along more smoothly. Want to thank you for that. And this ends my comments. I yield my remaining time back to you.
Thank you. Speaker number six, please come forward.
Boy, here we go again. I, I just want to thank the city council, the fire department, the police department, the public works, human resources. You guys are doing a good job. I know you, you come up here and you take a shellacking from us citizens, but I want to focus, I know I'm not supposed to, but I want to focus. The comments that were made about Claudia tonight were spot on. I, I've watched her get drug through the mud. I've watched her get kicked on the ground, not literally, but I just, and she gets back up and she puts the ship back in gear and gets, put the city right back where it needs to go. You don't see many Christ-like politicians. You really don't. And to have her, I'm, I'm not putting her on a pedestal. I've had the opportunity to meet Claudia and Mayor Sosa. I've met Pemberton and Mario, but I've had it some one-on-one time. And you can always look at somebody's eyes and see their soul of what it really stands for. If there was an award that you could give somebody, I know you guys give them out, but you should be able to receive one because I've seen what she's done for the city of Downey. I mean, look, she, I'm not saying she's the brightest city council member, but she's not the dumbest either. I mean, look, she made me a commissioner. So I mean, how bright could that been? But her heart's where it needs to be and her spirit's where it needs to be. She's, I, I always try and inject a little fun because I hate being so serious. I'm that way all day and I just, it's terrible. But I'm grateful to have the city council that we have. I've watched some go, some come, and I just think it's, it's honorable that you have that much of an impact yourself for our district. I'm, I'm just, I just want you to know that from the bottom of my heart, I am truly honored to have you as my city council member in my little tiny district of where I live. Things get done and they always do. And if we just get public works to trim those palm trees next to my house so they don't catch fire, I'll be okay. But thank you. Thank you for allowing simpletons like us to come up and sometimes not agree with you and rip on you and tear you apart and give our opinions that, oh, well. But I'm proud. I'm proud to be living in Downey for a couple more years and it's just awesome. We have such a great city. We got an excellent fire chief. They made an excellent decision. He's not as good-looking as Dan, but hey, you know, it is what it is. But thank you again. I love the citizens of Downey. I got nothing negative. I never will because I don't believe in it. It just, you don't start negative and try and end on a positive note. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second to close public comment?
So moved.
Assorted by the mayor. Now's the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself from item number three.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you.
I just wanted to make a quick comment on item three. We're addressing, can I say that now? We're addressing the paving on Downey Avenue and a number of residents have always expressed the need for paving on Downey Avenue and traffic calming measures. It's too fast. It will be put out for bid that we will be paving from Gallatin to Gardendale. But what's important to note is that they are going to also make it a bike lane on the sides and they're going to put a lane in the middle for turning. And it's similar to that of Old River School Road, which severely slowed down the traffic. At certain times, yes, it is more congestion, but this is what we need to do to, to slow down the traffic and people are driving. You're going to have only one lane in each direction. It'll also help save parked cars that are there from accidents being sideswiped. So just a heads up that it's, it's coming. There's going to be change on Downey Avenue from Gardendale to Gallatin. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I will now entertain a motion in a second for consent calendar items.
I move to approve the consent calendars as presented.
And I'll second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from item number three.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to administrative reports. We have three. Item number 10, approval of a construction contract for the residential streets pavement rehabilitation. Area three, capital improvement project, CIP number 22-22, Public Works. So that's city council, number one, denied the appeal by EFS West of city staff's recommended decision to reject the low bid by EFS West for the residential streets pavement rehabilitation program, area three project, capital improvement program, CIP number 22-22, on grounds of nonresponsiveness. Number two, award a contract to the next lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RJ Noble Company, in the amount of $3,793,751 for the residential streets pavement rehabilitation, area three project, capital improvement program, CIP number 22-22. See attachment A. And number three, authorize a city manager or his designee to execute the construction contract with RJ Noble Company in the amount of $3,793,751, including any non-substantive extensions, change orders, purchase orders, and amendments up to the authorized budget amount of $5,203,000. City Manager Bradley, is there a staff report for item number 10?
Yes, Mayor, we have our Director of Public Works here that will present on the item.
Good evening, Mayor Sosa and council members. The item before you tonight is for the award of a contract for paving of residential areas, residential streets in an area that's known as area three. Area three is defined by residential streets that are north of Florence Avenue, to the east of Lakewood Boulevard, and south of Telegraph Road. On December 18th, staff put out to bid the contract and on January 6th, we received eight bids ranging from $3.7 million to $4.9 million. Staff took the time to review those bids and looking at the lowest apparent bidder, EF West, we found two issues with their responsiveness to that, to that bid. Number one being providing a list of relevant projects over the last five years where they acted as the prime contractor. And number two, providing a list of subcontractors that would be working on the project that would be doing a substantial amount of work. And this is defined by either one-half of a percent of the overall cost of the project or $10,000, whichever is greater. In both cases, we found that they did not provide any relevant projects that they had done in the last five years. And when I say relevant, that would be projects related to residential street paving rehabilitation. And they did not provide any, other, other than one main sub, they did not provide a list of other subcontractors that the city could take the time, staff could take the time to evaluate their qualifications. We notified, on January 6th, we notified EF West that we were going to proceed with rejecting their bid and moving forward with recommending the next lowest bidder, RJ Noble, who did meet these qualifications. On January 9th, as allowed under our Downey Municipal Code, EF West reached out through a letter and to appeal this decision. In this letter, staff reviewed their information and still found that the two main items remained non-responsive, that being providing a list of relevant projects and providing any additional subcontractors for the staff to review. It is noted that they did provide a list of 33 projects that they'd worked on for public agencies. Those projects focused on compressed natural gas facilities, liquefied natural gas facilities and other utility projects and did not really pertain to residential, residential street paving projects. For these reasons, we recommend that we still move forward with rejecting the low bid and moving forward with the lowest responsive bidder, in this case being RJ Noble Company. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Bumgunner. Any council members have any comments or questions?
No questions from me. Just thank you, Matt, for providing the feedback regarding the nonresponsiveness of the first individual that, that had us delay this project. I know personally, my residents in District Four will be pleased to see this move forward and their streets repaved. I do want to reiterate that for residents, it's over $5 million in street repaving and rehabilitation, going back to our streets. I cannot wait to, to get this moving. I know residents on, along Otto and Suva will be very happy.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other council members have comments or questions?
No, I, I would like to say I appreciate the background on this because I, we always try to look for the lowest bidder and especially with streets, we don't always want lowest, but we want good as well. So I appreciate your background and the judgment that you deemed necessary.
Thank you.
Any other council colleagues?
I have one question. This company, EFS, they've done work in other cities, but there was no document, there was, tell us about that work.
Yes, they have done work in other cities, other public agencies. Those projects were focused on CNG and LNG gas facilities as well as other utility-type projects. So we were focused on that they didn't have this paving experience. And when we look at paving experience, that is traffic control-based, working with residents and businesses that they're going to be compromised. Any work that they were really doing was focused on a public facility that was away from the streets predominantly. So it just didn't really line up with the type of work that we're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion in a second to approve the recommended actions, items one through three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Director Bumgunner.
Thank you, sir.
I'll move on to item number 11, Downey Police Department organizational assessment, that the city council, number one, allocate the following nine positions within the fiscal year 2024 to '25, budget to be paid for by the newly passed Measure D revenues. Item number one, or one, traffic police officer, one, traffic detective, two officers corporals, one office assistant, one training coordinator, two forensic specialists, and one property room technician. And two, increase appropriations in the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 budget by And two, increase appropriations in the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 budget by $341,543 in general fund, Measure D operating fund, account number 12-4-2120, for the additional police department staffing. City Manager Bradley, is there a staff report for item number 11?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and take this item. This is an item that we are pretty excited to bring back to the council. As you recall, we started this project about a year ago. The council authorized staff to look at and assess the organizational structure of our police department. We brought on Matrix Consulting Group that has been working with us over the past several months to look at statistical information, looking at department reports, looking at operational protocols and procedures. We did surveys within the Department of Staff. We held some community meetings, really looked at sort of a 360 view of what the department is currently. And we've had several conversations over the past year as we've talked about, you know, the department staffing levels in particular being consistent with the pre-Great Recession timeframe. So we have 125 sworn officers now in 2025. We had 125 officers, sworn officers in 2007, 2008 timeframe. And really, this study was focused in on what is the appropriate growth that we need to obtain in the department to make sure that we continue to meet the needs of this community, to make sure that we keep the community safe. And we're happy to, you know, report out today that we've had a great assessment conducted, and we're adding, proposing to add in total 18, 18 staff, sorry, 16 staff to our workload. The council previously considered eight patrol officers and authorized that in, at the meeting of December 10th. That came at a cost of $1.5 million. We were able to begin to start working on that item because of Measure D. We want to thank the community for authorizing Measure D, which, as you recall, brings in approximately $6.4 million annually, at least in the first year. And so we were able to move forward now with the implementation of increased staffing plan because the community was gracious enough to allow us the opportunity, well, they were kind enough to allow us the opportunity to proceed with hiring staff because of the passage of Measure D. Today, we're back again to talk about additional staff. We have been working with the consultant to finalize the report. We are proposing an additional nine, or which will be a net of eight additional staff. So we have a couple of part-time positions that we're proposing to delete and make those full-time positions. As indicated and read by the mayor earlier, we're proposing today, one traffic police officer, one additional traffic detective, two officers/corporals, one office, one full-time office assistant, one full-time training coordinator, two forensic specialists, and one property room technician. The total cost of those with the, separate from the previously approved eight officers is about $1.4 million. So annually, the cost of all of these positions will be just under $3 million, $2.9 million, which is about 45% of the revenues we expect from Measure D. So this, again, the passage of Measure D lets us implement this staffing increase now, rather than trying to incrementally implement the growth in staff that we need over several, set of several years. So that's our proposal this evening to increase staffing as indicated by the additional nine positions. There are other things in the study that we will continue to work on and look at. We asked the consultant to look at retention and recruiting efforts and look at best practices that we could employ in our agency to continue to make sure that we can retain great staffing and we can recruit effective individuals to be here as public safety personnel in our city. Also, we'll continue to look at that. It's important for us as we go into, as the council may be aware, MOU negotiations this year. We have negotiations with all of our bargaining units, but in particular, our public safety folks. So that's something that we can continue to look at. We also asked the consultant to look at technology, best practice in technology. So we will continue to evaluate that and bring that forward as appropriate as we go through our regular budget process, budgeting processes throughout the year. At this point, there are a couple of additional staffing proposals that we'll continue to look at. They had asked, they had recommended that we take a look at some additional admin support. As we continue to grow, we think that may be necessary, but at the moment, we don't recommend proceeding with that, but we'll continue to look at it as we continue to grow the department. And there was a recommendation to look at our school resource officer program, which is really a partnership with the school district itself. Right now, we think we have adequate resources there, but we'll continue to work with the school district and look at this program. And if we need to make some adjustments for efficiency's sake, we'll bring those forward to the council for consideration in the future. With that, we are again excited to go through this. A lot of data and information here. It represents a lot of work with our staff in the police department. We want to thank the chief and his staff for working with the consultants. There's a lot of data and things that we had to bring together. And our recommendation today is to proceed with the addition of those staff. And thank you. I'll conclude my report with that.
Thank you, City Manager Bradley. Do any council members have comments or questions?
I do. I have some comments. First, thank you for providing this report. I do have to say that police department organizational assessment is very thorough, and as you mentioned, there's a lot of data in here. But again, going back to your comment, Roger, in 2008, we had 125 officers. And with these additions, where are we now, 2025?
So let me do the math there. 125 plus 16, it's 135, 141, is that right?
141.
Chief will correct my math for me.
I'm sorry. We were at 125, and with the authorization of the previous eight, that puts us to 133, two of which are paid by the school district for the SRL program. And then with four additional, we'd be up to 137.
137, okay.
Oh, on the sworn side, sorry. There are other ones that are nonsworn, so that's the sworn numbers.
Okay, the sworn numbers. Well, and again, I think our comments are, we thank the community for overwhelmingly voting for Measure D, and this really shows our support also as a council, making sure that we immediately deliver in terms of what we have been talking about and what we keep hearing of residents, more boots on the ground, more police presence. And I think it was important a year ago to have this assessment done. We can't continue to grow a city without having the appropriate response mechanisms. And in this case, our, you know, prioritizing our law enforcement, certainly our fire, but our law enforcement. And I just, I'm very pleased, and I'm looking forward to adding those positions, but also letting the community know that it is important to add those administrative positions because with additional volume in the backend, they need that additional support. But I, overall, I'm very pleased for the city of Downey, and the residents should be too.
I would like to chime in and say that we are showing 45% of the anticipated revenue, the $6 million revenue, is going for either boots on the ground or administrative help. It's going for what we said that we were going to do. And also, you noted that in the report, that April 1st, 2025, is when we should start receiving some of our funding. So they will be looking out, was it mid-February, and hiring and putting out that type on, what, our website?
We'll begin the recruiting process. Our intention is to make sure that we have people starting after April 1st, when we have the funds to cover the positions. So we'll probably begin recruitment in mid-February, depending upon workload with staff, because it's a lot of positions, takes a little bit of time to get them on board. But want to make sure that they're at least on board when we have the money in hand to start paying for them.
Okay. I'm glad to see we just welcomed one new officer that you had posted, right?
Yes, we just had one that graduated from the academy, and I'm excited tomorrow, I'm actually giving four conditional offers to four new police officer recruits. So the administrative staff is working hard to fill the vacancies we previously had, and now with these additional ones, it's going to be a long process, but they're working hard at it.
How many vacancies do we have right now?
Before the measure had been passed, we were down nine through retirements. We got those other eight, so that was 17. And then went out with four more, sounding bad, 21, but then we hired four more, so somewhere in the area of 17.
Well, this is great. I mean, thank you for working hard. I echo my council colleagues' sentiments. Downey, we hear you. We support our police officers, and public safety is our number-one priority. So I just get chills knowing that we're going in the right direction and we're hiring everybody as quickly as we can. So it just brings me so much excitement to know that safety is going to come back to our community. We support you, and we're excited.
Any other comments or questions? I would just like to say, great job by our staff, and thank you for the quick action on this. I will now entertain a motion in a second to approve the recommended actions, one and two.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number 12, discussion regarding providing additional funding for the new Downey YMCA facility. The City Council, one, discuss funding, including any potential city assistance of the new YMCA facility at 11531 Downey Avenue. And two, approve any additional fee waiver of $66,070 for city fees and associated costs for the YMCA of Metropolitan Los Angeles to facilitate the construction of a new YMCA facility at 11531 Downey Avenue. City Manager Bradley, is there a staff report on item number 12?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. This was an item that was asked for at the council, by the council at the last meeting. We were requested to put an item on here so the council could discuss potential funding for the YMCA. That's what this item is designed for today. We had also an evaluation that we've gone through preparing for this report of the fee waiver that was provided to the organization. We looked at it, and we, when we first did the estimate, we actually didn't have all the information. And so now that we have building plans and other things, we're able to find that we actually need to increase the fee waiver amount by $66,000. And so that was part of the recommendation today, is part of the discussion for council. And we're looking for authorization of that. And in fact, it might be appropriate for council to give us authorization to just provide whatever fee waiver is necessary for them, so we don't have to keep coming back on this item. From our perspective, we looked at the operating budget for the year. We don't necessarily have anything that we could identify that would be a cost savings to cover the amount that's requested today. So we do anticipate if there is a direction from council to move forward with an allocation, that that probably have to come from reserves. But only direction we're looking for today is if you like us to proceed, and we would bring back a conversation of how that might be executed in the future. So with that, Mayor, I will turn it over to the council for conversation. We do have information if there's any questions of staff. We're happy to entertain any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Bradley. Do any council members have questions or comments?
I have a question. If we, I understand that basically the request is 1.5 million so they can get these tax credits. But my understanding is, and this goes to your comment about it would have to come from the reserves, if we make a pledge for additional money, we can condition that pledge that it would be dispersed in three years, right? And so we have the possibility that we may be able to find the money in the next three years somewhere else in the budget and not have to turn the reserves. Just, that is a possibility, right?
If that's what the council wants to provide direction on, yes, that we could do that.
Thank you.
And knowing that there is a deadline right now, the commitment for a pledge would be needed now at this minute, at this meeting, because they could stand to lose a $5 million commitment. That's huge. And the support that we show in our residents and what businesses or entities bring into, this is an area that is welcomed by the residents. It spans for youth, for seniors, for youngs, for family. It's a void, and we all realize that the YMCA is providing a void in complementing what our services provide as well, that we offer. It's so critical to bring our YMCA back. They've done such a tremendous job in what they've done. But right now, that's why it's so critical for us to make a positive decision for them so that they don't lose this $5 million. And I am totally in favor of making a three-year pledge, as a colleague has said, that we can, down the road, look for the options of where it may come from. But right now, the decision, I feel, needs to be done now. That's why they're here. That's why they had the ask. And it's something that our residents are welcoming back. Then we are supporting our community. We are providing them what the community needs. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues?
How would that look divided in three years? That $1.5 million pledge for the YMCA? Roger?
It's really, you could divide it equally. It depends on how council would want us to proceed. So approximately 1.5 divided by three is, what, 500 per year?
So we're talking about a pledge of almost $3 million? If we add up everything from fee waivers and the 1.5 now and the 1 million that we already pledged?
Correct. So currently, the council has authorized the city to consider annually a contribution of $333,000, which the total would be, over three years, $1 million. And we're about one, about half a million in fee waivers at this point, so that's 1.5 total. And as I understand, I guess the initial, the next request is another 1.5. So total request from the city is $3 million, if you look at it from that perspective. And so we would, we're already providing 333, so that would throw an extra 500,000, so you're 880, $833,000 per year of contribution to the Y if you go with a three-year plan.
One-third of that prior pledge has already been allocated, correct?
Each year, we're supposed to come back to council to have you, as part of the budget process, allocate that. So we have provided the tranche this year, but we'll come back to as part of the budget process of this year and have, try to find a mechanism for $333,000. Again, as long as the money was in the funds, that was the other direction we received in the budget from the council. So as part of the budget process, we'll come to you, we'll identify something, and have a conversation with you about where that might come from, and then you can allocate it at that time. And Vaughn, you want to say something? Please do.
Yeah, and just to provide further context on that, so it's similar to what City Manager Bradley is alluding to. To find the monies for the additional and even for the current 1 million, ultimately, that has to be reallocated from other funds that are in city, for looking at operating funds for the city. So that would have to then be a recommendation back to the council that we would have to reallocate it from current funding, from a current program or service, and then reallocate it to make, in order to do the pledge. So that's what we're currently doing right now for the remaining 660, for the first 1 million. That is still being evaluated to see what we can, look at current funds, to see what can be reallocated from city, current city services in order to fund it.
So the first 1 million, we are, we took off from, if I'm not mistaken, from upgrades from our city building, correct? Or just the 300?
Correct. We took it from a current capital project, so we defunded portions of the building upgrade. That's correct.
The first 300,000, or the 300 and change.
The first, the first 300,000, correct.
And we haven't figured out where the two...
Not at this time, no, we have not. So as part of the budget process, we'll look at locations in the budget. It could be reserves, it could be a project, it could be someplace else where that money would come from.
And/or ultimately, it could be from reserves.
Correct. That's right. Yes.
I have a comment, and I'm going to face people from the Y that I very much respect and appreciate. And you know, we are in a really tough situation here because we, as a council, and staff, put together this measure, excuse me, Measure D, and the community overwhelmingly voted to increase the half cent. We just talked about how critical it is for our city and for our residents to see additional boots on the ground, for us to look at our real assessment of our police department. As someone who had, you know, my family, I raised my children in Downey's YMCA, it is difficult for me. I'm not going to lie to you. I am really struggling. But I, at the same time, I am struggling because the residents approved this sales tax measure so that we, as a council, make best decisions in terms of public safety. And there is nothing that I, that I want more than to reopen that YMCA, absolutely. But how, how do I look at our residents and say, we've just, you know, we've committed a million over the next three years, plus we're waiving half a million in, in staff and additional...
Fees.
Fees, and then another million and a half. That's, that's, that's $3 million.
Can we speak?
Not yet, not yet, Steve. I think there is no question in my mind the value of this organization, but at the same time, my residents, our residents elect us to really be prudent and look at how they want us to spend their money. Do they, did we pass Measure D so that we can open up the Y or open up, you know, the other projects that we have? I think these are really hard questions. And trust me, there's nothing more than, than, that I want than to say, I vote and I approve and let's move. But that also means we have to reallocate those monies from other areas that are also very vital and important to our community. Not to mention, as we continue the assessment on the police department, there's going to be additional needs. And so how do I balance, how do we balance the needs for, yes, we got to approve it, we would like to fund it? But is this really the job of Downey City Hall? To be giving $3 million to a nonprofit? As, as worthy of a cause as it is? You just, you really have to understand where I'm at with, with grappling with this decision.
Now can we speak?
There will be an opportunity for, for public comment. Right now, it's dialogue between the council.
Mayor and council, I can just interject. This matter is not being brought to you tonight as a public hearing. So ordinarily, I mean, there's no applicant, for example. So this is really primarily a conversation among the council as the matter was agendized. Certainly, some give and take might be in order with the folks here tonight representing the YMCA, but this is not the time and place for a full-fledged public hearing either, nor will the public ordinarily be given a chance to comment on the matter.
Well, I will defer again to you, City Attorney, and then to the mayor.
So, thank you. Does that conclude your comments?
That concludes my comments, Mayor.
Okay. So I do have a few points to make here. So I'll just, with respect to item number two, I know we've, you know, entertaining that fee waiver would bring the fee waivers close to 500,000, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm in favor of that because I know that cost of materials and goods have gone up. So.
Mayor, if I can just interject quickly, just to get the dollar amount. So the total waiver needed would be 362,150. So just to give you the total dollar amount.
That's.
362,150.
That's aside from the 66?
That would be inclusive of the 66.
Okay. All right. So I'm in favor of that. With respect to number one, there's, there's a few things that concern me. And I, just full disclosure, I do have a few friends on the Y board. Some of them are sitting there and the fundraising committee. And there's some, some gentlemen there that I hold to the highest regard. But when I, when I look at these, when I look at these votes, I, you know, I take the emotions, I do my best to take the emotions out of it, and I just look at the numbers. You know, Steve Roberson approached me recently to, hey, you know, take a look at this, see what you guys can do. And I said, yeah, by all means, we'll do that. And, and we did that the first time when the, when the fee waiver came up, we had a few options and we opted to go with the, the highest fee waiver possible. And then the second time around, there was a proposal or a motion to provide a million dollars for the Y over the next three years. And that was unanimous decision, obviously, because this city and this, this council fully supports the Y. But again, I look at the numbers, I look at the big picture. I do think that the city was extremely generous in, in providing this, well, this is kind of, well, it is an unprecedented move of providing $1 million plus close to $400,000 in fees waived. My concerns are, we do have some upcoming capital expenditures, and when I hear words of reallocation, that we have to find the funds, and then we have to dip into the reserves, that concerns me. Because we need to remain fiscally prudent. Granted, we've already authorized, you know, close to 1.4 million combined with cash and fees waived. As mentioned, we have upcoming capital expenditures. We have the expansion of the space center, which is going to provide STEM education to our youth. We have long-term road, you know, our roads are being improved right now, and that's a long-term project. And I understand because of the cost of materials that I think everybody is aware of, the cost of materials and labor have gone up. So we have to find additional funds for, for the roads. We also have upcoming, as City Manager Bradley mentioned, we have bargaining negotiations coming up for all our MLUs, cost of living adjustments. And that translates into trying to retain the best staff and hire the best staff possible to deliver services that may impact quality of life here in Downey. So again, I see a lot of familiar faces, a lot of friends over there. I, you know, I have some very, I have some fiscal concerns here as far as having to dip into reserves and have to talk about reallocation of funds. We don't even know where they're going to come from. So again, I think the city has already displayed, and again, I went through this, I told Steve that I'd go through this and take a look, you know, dive down the numbers, and it's just not there. We can't, we, it'll be irresponsible for us to put Measure D on the, on the, on the ballot and then turn around and, you know, hand out a total of $3 million. It's just not right, and I'm not comfortable with that. So again, this is, this has nothing to do with anything else other than numbers. And I think if we give out the, the additional 1.5, and it's, it's tough, because I know there's, there's some tax breaks and hang on that, but it would put our city staff in a bind and cause some, some strain as far as going over the budgets. So that concludes my comments, and I'm okay with Roberson or anybody else making comments? City Attorney?
Motion to.
Mayor, sure, I would certainly defer to your preference.
Okay.
I'm curious, Mr. City Manager, how much do we have in reserves today?
The reserve policy says 35%. I think we're just around $35 million.
So we have about $35 million today and then, so next year, how much will we put into reserves based on our current policy?
It depends on the growth in our, our general fund balance. So we always go with 35% of what the general fund is. So it could potentially grow. So I don't, but I don't know by how much. I haven't done the projection yet.
This year, how many, or last year, how much do we do?
Do you have that number?
It's been roughly about $35 million. The projection is still going to be anticipated for year end, about $35.9 million when we look forward of what we're going to end with for fund balance for reserves.
No, but yearly?
What the growth was, is what you were asking over the prior year?
The growth each year?
We would have to look back at that.
Yeah, we have it at our fingertips.
It's been roughly around $35 million.
So I've said this before about the reserves. I think it's great that the city has a rainy day fund. And to me, this presents one of those situations where we're looking at something that's urgent. And while I appreciate that the city should continue to save money, we're looking at possibly a generation of Downey families. I don't know how many years this Y has been closed or it's going to be closed unless we come up with the money. I, I think we all want to see the Y open. We have the money. We have $35 million in reserves. They're asking for 1.5 more, so it'd be a $3 million investment. We know of cities that invest much more in their YMCA's than we do. So in terms of precedent, I guess it's unprecedented for us because the city operates somewhat where we rely on other people, organizations, that we have great organizations that do a lot for our residents. But for 60 years, they've been providing services and never asked us for any money. I, I think it's a wise investment. I was elected to spend the city's money in a way that I think best serves our city. There are public safety consequences that come about from the services provided by a YMCA. It's called deterrence. You have young kids who are going to be cared for, after-school programs. You have teenagers who are going to be active, and you're keeping kids off the streets. So I do see a relevance to public safety. While I'm not saying we should use the Prop D money, we, we are a solvent city. We have the money to provide to this YMCA. I don't think, I don't hear the community being critical of us for taking this step or, when we already took one for a million dollars and, and then waiving the fees. I don't hear community outrage or anyone being upset about us making this investment in the Y. So again, I think it's a necessary investment. Our community needs this. Do we need some education? Some people would say no, but it'd be great. I mean, the roads, we've done a lot. We're now one of the enviable cities in, in the southeast because of the condition of our roads. Our roads are doing great. And bargaining negotiations, well, we'll do, we'll deal with that when we get to it. I think the YMCA is worthy of this additional investment, and I am in support of giving them the additional funding they need so they can get that $5 million tax credit. I think it's a good investment, so.
If I may, Mayor, I do have questions, and I'm hoping we can open the conversation with the Y. If I can be honest, I am struggling as well. I struggle because I went to the Y, my family, and I know several of you on the board and friends. I never thought it would make, this is a tough decision, you know? But you brought up an interesting point, Mayor Mario. You said that by not approving this additional $1.5 million pledge, that it won't be open. But the reality is, they're going to be open, right? Or is this one pledge? Wait, I'll allow, if, sorry. By allowing this pledge to happen, and this is where I want that conversation, once we open that conversation up, would that close the door for the YMCA to open? This 1.5 pledge and this $5 million tax credit, will it, what's, what are we allowing this to get built? What, what is the necessary funds for that? And so I'm open to having that conversation, and I open this conversation if, Mayor.
Well, it's not really a conversation. I mean, I think we can allow Mr. Roberson to come up and make some comments.
Comments, yes.
Quickly, but we're not going to engage back and forth.
I agree with that. No back and forth, but more just my concern.
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you for putting us on the agenda again. Thank you for the million-dollar pledge that the city gave us. Thank you for the $300,000 that you gave us, and then if you give the, waive another 600 or 66,000, thank you for that, too. I would rather walk over to that wall and bang my head on that wall for 15 minutes rather than come in here and ask you guys to help us again. We have, we have raised and pled, that Y is not, it's not more important than these police officers or these firemen. It's the, it's the next most important thing in this city, at the school district also. Those are the four things that make up this city. And if we don't get that Y built, shame on all of us. I don't live in this city, and I don't like sitting here for three hours listening to stuff I don't want to listen to to try to get the city to help us, but I'm here trying to do it. We have raised and have pledges 20, just over $21 million since we started. Our total to build that is 22.5. That's the Y with the pool. So we're $1.5 million short. If we don't come up with the one, a pledge of money or a pledge for the 1.5 million by the end of this month, that's Friday, we have an opportunity to lose the $5 million tax credit that we have been given. So that's going to set us back tremendously, and we've been working on raising this money now for two years. And I would say shame on us. If the city council sets up there and they can't see a need for that Y, one little girl falls in a swimming pool and, and somebody in northeast Downey's backyard and drowns because she can't swim, and we can't find $1.5 million, shame on us. That is absolutely ridiculous. When he's, when Mario looks over and says, we had $35 million in reserves and we can't help that Y build that building for, for a one point, it's just awful that we can't do that. And we don't have anywhere to turn. If we had other sources to turn to for that extra 1.5 million, we would have done that. We, we can't run out and just find 1.5 million like that. The city is setting on the money that can help us build the Y, and they darn sure should give that. Give that pledge, let them build that Y and get the, 50% of the kids in this town can't swim. They cannot swim. Where are they, where are they going to learn to swim? Where are the little middle schoolers and the elementary school kids going to learn to swim? They can't go over to Downey High School and learn how to swim. The only place in this city that they can learn how to swim is that YMCA that's been vacant since 2020. We need to get that building built and the city, honest to Pete, you know, you guys know me as a friend, you know, the 1.5 million, this city should pledge that. And if we don't do that, if you don't do that, really shame on all of us because this, this city needs that, needs that Y. And I'll answer questions if, if you can, and I'll get these guy, these are Y board members here are, they can help me with the questions. But I'll try to answer your question, Horacio, whatever it was.
Yeah, you know what? I mean, you can ask him a question, but I will make a comment. I, you know, I completely disagree as far as what's important here. We have public works, we have community development, all those, our staff members are make what this, this city go around. And you know what? Steve, I take exception for you to come here and say that shame on us.
Shame on everybody.
When we made an unprecedented move, and I'd like to see a list of cities that have invested in the Y.
Probably not, Hector, probably, this is a different city.
Listen, listen, but for you to come here after we approved a million dollars and over $300,000 in fee waivers, that's unacceptable. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm offended by that, and I take exception by those.
I don't mean to offend you. I'm just telling you how important the Y is to the city. I live in Fullerton, but my city is here. My kids grew up here. They went to Warren High School. They grew up here, they learned how to swim at the Y. That Y is incredibly important to this city.
But I want to point out, again, you guys, the Y came to us.
I know we did, and you helped us.
It's, this is my time right now. The Y came to us in need of help with fee waivers. We looked into it. There were three options. We gave you the highest amount of fee waivers because we support the Y. Then you came up to us, you came to us a few months later and asked for a million dollars. We had to deliberate, we had to look into it, and we found a way to fund those $1 million. And that again showed that this city, the city council fully supported the Y. This time around, at the 11th hour, you said, you know, we'll take a look into it. And I did, I spent a lot of time looking into this, and I've already stipulated, I've explained my reasoning for not supporting item number one. It's just not there. And dipping into reserves, reserves, and I thank the councils, the previous councils before us for being fiscally prudent, and I can tell you, with the, the tragic fires and, and things that have happened in LA County, further drives the point of maintaining healthy reserves. So again, there were no promises or guarantees. We promised to look into it. We did, we all deliberated. It's going to come down to a vote. There's, we don't know which, which way this is going to go, but I got to tell you, I got to, I got to stand for my colleagues and city staff here. We made an unprecedented commitment to the Y for a lot of money, and no other city has done that.
Hector, I agree. 100%, I agree with that, and I'm not arguing with that. I just know how important it is. When we open up, we're going to, within six months, they're going to have 2,400 units at that Y. 2,400 units is probably 5,000 to 6,000 individuals that we're going to be helping. And a lot of those are kids, and a lot of those are seniors. If we, if we start, if we lose that $5 million tax credit, then we've got to go and we've got to start, we're not working on raising a million and a half, we're working on raising 6 and 1/2 million. And the longer we keep raising, trying to raise the money, the longer the Y is going to set there vacant, and the city needs it, honest to Pete. You know, I'm up here pleading because this, this city of Downey needs a YMCA.
I understand. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments?
I want to make one, one comment. Sitting on budget committee, I'm becoming aware of percentages of reserves. And yes, Downey's had a great leader and a prior city manager, and our reserves are strong, and they still continue to be strong. And as it's mentioned, we are at 35 million. Last year, we contributed 900,000, almost a million to our reserves. Most cities have a 16% reserve range, 16 to 20%. We are at 35. So we are very good, we are solid. And it's not to say that we are taking, we don't want to whittle down our reserves. All of us are really financially prudent. But this, again, is an investment, like my colleague has said, it's an investment in the community. This isn't opening up of a, I don't want to say a restaurant or a business. a, I don't want to say a restaurant or a business or something. It's an investment in the lives of so many people that we will affect. And that's why the community is receptive into how the city council welcomes the Y and tries to help them and has given them already allocations. So for us to use this rainy day fund reserves, it's in a sense investing in our community. This is what our residents need. This is what they want to see. And in social media that I've seen, it's always been positive so far. We all have our stories. We all have our fault. But it's an investment in that Downey Avenue building that helps bring that $5 million. It's not just completing our goal of getting our construction budget. We don't want to be the ones to say we helped to lose, not to lose, but we could have let them have $5 million additional dollars. That's huge. And like I said, it's sitting with a 35% reserve compared to 16. Some cities have less, 10. What was that one city who was like in the negative? We are fiscally strong. We are always going to be fiscally prudent. We have a legacy project that is coming. We want to address that as well. We understand that. But right now, the immediate need is not to let the Y lose the 5 million. I see 35% here, almost 36%. And in my opinion, I think it is an investment for our city.
Sig, Mayor, broadly, if I could provide just additional information regarding the reserves. So the staff report alludes to some of the legacy projects that are be going on with the city and just to put some of those projects into perspective for the council. So in particular, the ERP project that we're currently underway, so our enterprise systems for financial and human resources, we are hitting end of life and we will not be getting any support any longer from the vendor. So going through that process, we were recently notified that in order to do a full changeover, it's going to cost the city about $5 million conservatively for that project. It could widely range to something much higher, but that is the conservative estimate. The southeast gateway line, the cities are expected to contribute about their 3% towards that project. Next month, we'll be getting the final numbers of related to that 3%. Right now, the estimated is 6.2 million of the city's responsibility towards that gateway line. Also, there's some economic development items and incentives that are under discussion that are also could play a major role. So when taking those, all those items into consideration and possibly also using reserves, there's a big possibility of then dropping below what some would consider industry standards. So that is something staff is currently just evaluating as we move forward with operational budgets and making sure there are being stewards with the reserves under, you know, city council guidance.
So my question was, if we don't pledge this 1.5 million, you're telling me that the YMCA is not going to open doors?
What-
Or you're not going to receive the pool?
Yeah, Horacio, what we run the risk of, if we don't have the 22.5, the 5 million pledge is, $5 million tax credit is based on us having 22.5 raised or pledged by the end of this month. So we've got four more days to get that one and a half million dollar pledge. Or we have, we run the risk of losing the $5 million tax credit.
Yeah, but so the YMCA will still be open?
No. We'll have to back up and we'll start trying to raise the, we'll have to, we may have to raise that, that $5 million that we're going to lose plus the 1.5 in order to get to the 22.5 total for the project that we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to ask our city manager to explain to us, having served on the Budget Subcommittee for a few years as well, I wanted him to explain to us what, you know, there's some nuances to what we have versus what other cities have. And I just wanted to-
I think what you're referring to and what Mayor Protim was also talking about is the Government Finance Officers Association establishes a, some guidelines for what are best practices for establishing reserves for a community. That is 16%. And they establish that as the absolute minimum or floor that every community should set aside to make sure that they have at least three months of operational reserves on hand to get through tough times. However, what it also says is that is the floor and every community should evaluate their, their exposure to their, the market. And if they see that there's vulnerabilities for financially to the market, that they increase that number to some other, to some other value. We've chosen here in the city to go with 35%, which is twice the, the floor. And so that's where we're currently, I believe that's where Mayor Protim was talking about. And I believe that's what you're referring to as well, Councilmember Frometta.
Any other questions for Steve Roberson?
Thank you, Steve. My last comments on, on the issue, I take great, it's, it's very painful to know that you have, that we have friends and, and people in the YMCA. And it's one of those, you know, you were right when you gave me advice, you want to make some tough decisions that's going to affect a lot of people. I just want to begin by saying that I am all for the YMCA. And I think that was shown when we pledged the $1 million plus the additional fee waivers, which is, if I'm not mistaken, what was it again? The fee waivers, 300, 400? 400,000. And I have a responsibility, you know, for my city. I have a lot of projects. I came in really trying to revamp my district. I'm trying to bring in a new park in Brookshire Park. I'm trying to bring a holiday movie night at Golden Park. That's going to cost a lot of money. We went on a trip for the Wells Dorothy and they told us each one will cost about 200,000 to 500,000 for, half, for generators. And each, and so, and we need to have nine. And we only have two. And each generator that we have right now renting, Matt, what was the, what is their cost right now? Forty?
It's about $40,000 a month.
Per generator that we have. And so when I add up all that, I'm just, it's, it's painful. I own a business and I have so many organizations coming in and asking, can you donate to our, to our cause? Can you give food? And it pains me every time when I have to say no. And it's just $3 million is a big, big ask for just one organization that, and please, I just pains me to say, it's, it brings so much opportunity to youth. Maybe we can discuss this at a later future date, but for me to rush into voting right now, $1.5 million, I just, I just, I can't. And I think my colleague Claudia mentioned to me, or mentioned earlier, I think there has to be a balance and a reality check of what we're allocating our money and, and not affecting the aspirations and the, what we want as council members for the foreseeable future. I just, I want, I know the YMCA is going to open up. And later on, we're going to have the, the pool. But I just, for me to say $3 million for the pool right now, I just, I don't know. It's just one of the struggles that I have right now.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments or questions, colleagues?
Well, I would just remind this council that we do not have a youth center like other cities do. We do not have a Boys and Girls Club like other cities do. We only have the Y. You know, we keep talking about where do our teenagers go? We're very fortunate. We have great families in Downey that take care of their kids. But this is direct services to kids, teens, and seniors. So I give it a lot of priority. I think this is much needed. I think Steve is right. We have great police, fire, great school district, and then we have the Y that for 60 years has been providing service and we never gave them any money. But yeah, so at some point, Mr. Mayor-
Yeah, you know what, and I'll just close with this. Again, I agree with you and Mr. Roberson that the, the Y is vital for this community. That's why we initially pledged the 1.3 million and funds and fee waivers. And for me, again, I, we want to make this happen, but we have to be fiscally responsible when we talk about trying to find the monies later, reallocation of funds. That means other departments are going to suffer. And you know, I outlined all my concerns. We had the, with the collective bargaining with all, all our bargaining units. And we need to maintain strong reserves. So with that, I will entertain a motion in a second to-
What if we, what if we do 500 over the next four years?
Well, it's-
They have to have this pledge of the 1.5 to get that tax credit before the end of the month. That's the urgency and that's why they're here. And unless that can be made, they won't be able to receive that. They will lose that 5 million. That's the urgency. Otherwise, I don't think they would even be here.
Can somebody call Assemblymember Pacheco?
And so many of those areas have been cut as well. Yes.
It just shows also that where other individuals in higher office, I mean, Robert Garcia only gave the YMCA 850,000. We pledged our a million plus the fee waivers. Janice Hans gave $2 million.
How about Senator Archuleta?
Archuleta, you know, it's just one of those things where-
Garcia had pledged three, but it got cut down.
Cut down, but you know, he made a decision too. You know, it's, where do we, why did it went from three to?
May I inquire, speaking of, Mr. Mayor, may I inquire, my understanding is that state Senator Archuleta is trying, but he couldn't get a commitment in time for this deadline. If we were to make a pledge, but then we find out Senator Archuleta gives them a million, what happens if we don't complete our pledge? I don't know. This sounds kind of shady, but I'm just curious. Archuleta may come through in a couple of months. Can we, if we were to make a pledge today, can we revisit it if we find out you got more money? Is that ethical, allowed? I'm asking.
You're so hooked.
We couldn't take that.
Okay.
Just for us to be, for us to be fully responsible for the Y, that's, that's where it's, I don't think it's fair for them, for us to be, put the blame or completely 100% on us. And I just, I struggled coming up to this meeting for this, this vote. So.
Well, if there's no other comments or questions, I'd like to entertain a motion in a second for whatever action desired.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we make a pledge of 1.5 to the YMCA. This is an additional pledge of 1.5 to be distributed over the next four years. And that we approve their-
Three years.
Well, we could condition it on four, was my understanding, but I'm proposing four years. So 1.5, as long as you get the pledge, my understanding is they get the tax credit. So my motion, Mr. Mayor, is 1.5 pledge with distribution over the next four years and their additional fee waiver.
I'd like to substitute that motion and just vote on item number two first. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number two.
That's fine. We could vote on number two and then I'll make my other motion.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Please vote on item number two only.
This will, just confirm, we're removing all type of fee waivers that come forward. Completely right.
Yes.
No, we're providing additional, we're not removing, we're providing additional fee waivers.
The motion to approve item number two of the recommended action is-
Just for clarity's sake, does that mean that we need to come back if there's anything over the 66? Or are you authorizing any amount?
Just the 66.
For the waivers, I'll get as long as it takes.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, right.
I'm sorry, what was that? What did we authorize?
I would just recommend that, that motion be clarified for the record.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve any fee waivers at $66,070 or anything else that comes up with respect to the fees for the YMCA.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have to revote? No?
No, we understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, if you want to go ahead and make a motion for item number one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I make a motion that we make a pledge of additional 1.5 to be distributed over the next four years.
A second then.
Please vote.
The motion fails with Mayor Sosa, Councilmember Frometta, and Councilmember Ortiz voting no.
This city council meeting will now adjourn in the memory of the cruise of Apollo One, Space Shuttle of Columbia, and Space Shuttle Challenger, Border Patrol Agent David Christopher Milan, 44 U.S. Department of Homeland Security shot and killed while on duty during a traffic stop, Riverside County Sheriff Deputy Timothy Corlou, 40, assigned to the Hoopa Valley Station, who died in a traffic collision while on duty, and retired fire engineer Jack Shepard, 20-year veteran of the Downey Fire Department, who passed away at home on December 24, 2024. A moment of silence, please. This meeting is now adjourned.